We thank you for our protections and blessings from you in the past. Pray that you would be with all of our city employees and leadership. We ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are gonna do a few presentations of awards and recognitions. We have a presentation of three recognitions for the Public Works Department by the Texas Chapter of American Public Works Association. And so when you hear, let's see, when you hear your name called, just go ahead and come on up. We have the Transportation Award, which is the small cities rural committees from Lower Seguin Road. We have B, the Distinguished Service to Public Works, Frank Graham, and C, Exceptional Performance Journalism by Jeanette Gonzalez. Come on up with me, please.
Last but not least, we have the Lower Seguin Road Reconstruction Award.
Thanks again to the city staff for those amazing awards. All right, next up, we have a public hearing. Conduct a public hearing regarding a request for a variance for Grampy's Pizzeria. Grampy's Pizzeria to sell alcohol beverages within the city where the place of business is within 300 feet of a public school. Peggy Simics, welcome Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This public hearing is the second time that you're gonna hear this. It was originally held back in, I believe it was February, and back in February, and then it was on the agenda on April 22nd for us to do the ordinance, but at that time, we did not have the letter from the school district. So the applicant at that time went ahead and pulled the request, and at that time, we had to start the process all over again. So it was published back in the newspaper. We had to wait the 30 days, so he's back here again. The criteria is the same as last time. He met all the criteria except with the letter from the school district. We have received a letter from the school district, and I do have it in the file. Other than that, it's exactly the same as what you heard back in February and what you heard on the 22nd and what's in your packet. I know that the applicant is here and he's able to speak during the public hearing if you want to hear anything from Mr. Graff. But other than that, I think as you know that he's allowed to do a variance as we have an ordinance. The TIBC requires us to make sure that you know that for a applicant to be able to sell alcohol near a school, it's usually 300 feet from the property line to the property line. People get confused with the school and the church. So the school is property line to property line, as the church is front door to front door. So that's the difference. So we did measure, and it's in your packet, and it's 138 feet, I believe, but he is allowed to do this variance, and he's done all the paperwork that's required to do it. And it does take a three-quarter vote of the council, full council, to be able to approve the variance. That means that six out of seven of you have to vote for this ordinance that you will have in your, that you do have in your packet tonight. We didn't want to wait normally. When you have your public hearing, you do wait until the next meeting before we do the ordinance. But this has been going on since February, so we went ahead and put the public hearing this time and the ordinance on the same agenda. So at that, at this time, it's up to you.
Thank you, Peggy. All right. So would the applicant want to come on up and speak? And then I'll open it up for anyone else who wants to come speak as well. So if you could, just come on up to the microphone and tell us a little bit about this variance and how it would help your business. Thank you. Just make sure that the microphone, when you press the button, make sure it's green.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
You want to go first? You want me to go first? Okay. All right. Mayor, Council, here we are again. Thank you once again for your time and this opportunity. I'm here with my wife, co-owner, and our son, Tierney. We are here today to ask for your vote on the variance that will allow us to sell beer and wine at our establishment, which has already been discussed. We want to reiterate that this was never in our original business plan when we opened our doors almost two years ago. But with the recent changes in economic playing field, we find it to be a much-needed addition in order to compete with the multi-unit franchises and chains that have begun to move into the area. We are just a mom-and-pop restaurant trying to reach our own American dream. Since we opened our doors, there's now an MOD Pizza, a Perry's Bar and Pizzeria, and in the works is Crust Pizza Company, Max &amp; Louis', and Olive Garden, all of which sell alcohol and have a menu that relates or is very similar to ours. This isn't to mention all the places that we knew that were there in existence prior to our opening, Catalano's, which is down here, 46th Street, at that time, Axe Shack, I think I named them all, but they all, and Marcos, Marcos Pizza.
Olive Garden.
Yeah, they all sell alcohol as well. But we knew that when we came in, but obviously, all these others coming in has changed things for us. We understand that there are concerns involved with the sale of alcohol, as we have 60 years total in the restaurant industry, our experience. We aren't amateurs, nor are we beginners. Concerns are everywhere. Our own son, he's about to be in eighth grade. A year, next year, he'll be attending Steel High School. Quite frankly, we are more concerned about what he will be exposed to in those four walls and out in the parking lot possibly than we are with him working four to five days at our restaurant. Some other concerns? Well, take Evo and Santico's, for instance. We all know where they are. We've all been there. We all drop our kids off, or we go with them to bowl, to play games, to watch a movie. Well, they both have full-blown bars in them all day long, from open to close. Just down the road from us on 1103 in Green Valley is Action Behavioral Center. Now, this is a wonderful facility that specializes in the treatment of autistic children. However, it's located right next to Ready Room, which is a beer tap room. There's also a CBD botanical place that sells CBD products right next to it, which, by the way, just got approved last night, or Sunday night, by to sell THC products. So that makes that available. And just around the corner there in that same strip center is Skip's Liquor Store, which is basically open six days a week and from open to close. And just across the street, tatty corner, is another liquor store, Sip &amp; Smoke, which isn't all that far from Sybalo Valley Elementary. Another one would be Walmart. We all know where it is. Although it is cash and carry, it's still closer to the front doors and property line than Weider, to Weiderstein Elementary than we are at Steel. We can literally, you can literally load up your cart and walk away with as much as you want. They also sell firearms. Now, MOD Pizza, which is right in that same area, which I mentioned earlier, their front door is actually closer to Weiderstein Elementary than our front door is to Steel High School. Now, I don't have a fancy machine to do the calculations, but I looked it up on Google Maps, and we are 739, or they are, I'm sorry, they are 739 feet from their front door to Weiderstein Elementary. Now, that's just Google Maps, so that's an estimate. But from that same, same, doing that same measurement, we are 1,539 feet from Steel High School's front doors. So quite a bit of difference, almost double. Since day one, we've been there for our community. Whether it's holding fundraisers for our schools or a great cause like helping a family with their son's heart issues, we will not stop. We will always find a yes. We have a great continuing relationship with all of our schools, especially Steel High School. We provide meals for functions, events, game days, and social, and special occasions such as teacher appreciation. We also provide pizzas to sell at their concession stands for all the home games. We did that last year, and we plan on doing that again this year. That was a great hit. We could have opened our business anywhere. We even looked at the current location of Perry's Bar and Pizzeria. We actually were very fond of that location. However, it was way too pricey for us. We couldn't afford it. We also looked into different cities, such as Universal City, Live Oak, and New Braunfels. But ultimately, we fell in love with this location, right in the heart of our city, the area we reside in, the area which we've played and coached baseball in for nine years, the area we pay our current property taxes for, and the area that we call home in our neighborhood. In conclusion, we have no intentions on becoming a bar, nor we have no desire to have late-night hours. Our restaurant isn't even set up to have a bar. We plan on simply offering canned or bottled and wine beer from a behind-the-counter cooler. We will, along with having everyone certified to sell. Lastly, and most importantly, the mural on our wall says Grampy's Neighborhood Pizzeria. That name will never change. This is our neighborhood, and we are in the pizza business. A beer, a glass of wine would just be a nice addition and service to our neighborhood. Thank you so much for your time and consideration tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Think my wife would like to say something?
Okay.
If you, that's okay. You want to say something?
Thank you for your time and for your continued service to our city. We know your roles aren't easy, and we deeply appreciate your willingness to listen to the voices of local residents and small business owners. I'd like to take a moment to speak, not just as the owners of Grampy's Pizzeria, but as parents and as a family. When you run a small business, especially a family-owned and operated one, you end up wearing all the hats: operator, manager, marketer, janitor, and lots more. But sometimes people forget about the most important hats: being a mom and a dad. As parents, we spend many nights on the baseball field, so many nights, or juggling busy schedules to make sure that our son comes first. Tonight, we are grateful to be here as a family, but that doesn't mean the balancing act ever stops. Our son is a huge part of our lives and a huge part of Grampy's. Many of you may have met him at the pizzeria. He works right alongside us, not just learning about the business, but learning what it means to serve, to show up, and to be part of a community. When we say Grampy's is family-owned and operated, we mean it in every sense. Our son, along with all of our team members, many of whom are teens as well, aren't just employees, they're family. And we would never do anything that could put them, or even any of our customers, in a situation that feels unsafe or inappropriate. Their well-being is always at the center of every decision that we make. Pursuing a beer and wine license was not something we planned on from day one. It's a decision we made out of our deep commitment to our family, to support them, to protect the business that we've built together, and to help stay competitive in an evolving economic climate. As more national chains can move into our area and as operating costs continue to rise, we have to find ways to adapt in order to survive and thrive. Adding beer and wine is one way for us to stay on level footing, provide for our son, hopefully leave him a legacy one day, and continue to serve this community that means so much to us. We understand that serving alcohol, especially near a school, can raise concerns, but we take those concerns very seriously. We also want to be very clear, we meet the minimum distance requirement set by the state, which is door-to-door. The City of Sybalo's ordinance requires a special variance, which was why we're here asking for your thoughtful consideration. Grampy's has always been and always will be a place for families. We are a neighborhood restaurant, a neighborhood pizzeria. Our restaurant is built on community relationships and trust. We have no plans to become a bar, to open late hours, or create an atmosphere that would conflict with our core values. Our goal is simply to enhance the experience for many adult customers who have asked for the option to enjoy a glass of wine or a beer with their meal while still protecting the safe, welcoming environment that we have worked and fought so hard to create. We hope that you'll see this request is not just about business, it's about family. It's about giving our son a future, providing meaningful jobs to other young people, and ensuring that Grampy's can continue to be a place where families can gather together, students feel welcome, and the community comes together. Thank you again for your time, for your service, and for giving us the chance to be heard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? If so, come on up.
Sorry, can you open the public hearing?
Okay. Sorry, did I not do that?
No.
Okay. All right. So I opened the public hearing at 6:40, or let's just call it 6:35. Welcome, Maggie, now that the public hearing's open.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here to speak on behalf of Grampy's Pizzeria and to ask for the council to approve the variance requested to allow them to serve beer and wine at their establishment. In 2013, Ordinance 1066 was adopted by Sybalo Council that dealt with making it unlawful for selling of alcoholic beverages within the city where places of businesses were within 300 feet of any church, public school, private school. And when that adoption took place, a number of citizens and property owners stepped forward to advise council that the absolute prohibition prevented the development of national chain restaurants, grocery stores, and drug stores, as well as upscale microbreweries from coming to Sybalo. Now, these words are directly from the amended ordinance that was put to residential vote in 2015. The ask for modification allowed council to grant variances if they determined, among other things, that enforcement of the regulation in a particular instance is not in the best interest of the public, constitutes waste, or inefficient use of land or other resources, or does not serve its intended purpose. The voters responded, and Sybalo residents voted in favor of letting council grant variances at their judgment. Now, Grampy's is not a national chain, but that does not make it unworthy of this consideration. They are a local favorite, a community vested member, and simply want to be able to provide what their customers are asking, as well as be competitive with their surrounding eateries. A Facebook video that the chamber created to walk a first-timer to their establishment has received over 12,000 views, 16 shares, 146 interactions, to include 26 comments. I guess the term is viral. This happened within less than four days. Some of the comments include: Love Grampy's. Love their delicious pizza. The owner, Aaron, and his wife and staff are so friendly and helpful. Great service. Highly recommend Grampy's Pizza to everyone in the Sybalo insurance areas. I love how they support schools in our community, too. My family and I love Grampy's. In closing, going back to how council decides to grant a variance, if the intended purpose is to not prohibit a business from conducting business, and it is to support the effective use of resources, which Grampy's contributing to the community of Sybalo and the school district is definitely a good use of resources, we must then ask the final question of what is the intended purpose of not granting this variance? It is not going to be a bar, nor are for hard liquor. It's only to ask so that their patrons can enjoy a glass of wine or beer with their meal. I ask council to grant this variance so this business, this family, can continue to contribute, work, live, and give back to Sybalo. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Anyone else like to say anything in support or about this item? All right. Hearing none, we will close the public.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I did want to make one.
Go ahead, Paul.
One clarification, and sorry if this is repetitive, but the distance requirement of 300 feet is, for a public school or a school, is property line to property line. And for hospitals and churches, it's door-to-door. So in this, this instance, we're looking at the property lines, and that's the measurement.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Okay. We're gonna close the public hearing. The time is 6:51 PM. And move on to the next one, which is B, conduct a public hearing for a staff-initiated rezon from mixed-use regional employment, which is the Muir District, to a light industrial LI District for 263.154 acres of land, seven, I'm sorry, 15 separately-owned private tracts consisting of 126.443 area tract of land out of ABS 1313, 3641 Santa Clara Road, and a 17-acre tract out of ABS 313 at 4105 Santa Clara Road, and a 84.442-acre tract of land out of ABS 313 Weber Hose Lane, and a 1.093-acre tract out of ABS 134 over at 10562 West Highway 10, and a 0.718-acre tract of land out of ABS 134 located at 10570 IH 10, and a 6.676-acre tract of land out of ABS 1314 over at 10833 Interstate Highway 10, and a 0.718-acre tract out of ABS 134 over at 10570 IH 10, Texas, and a 2.071 AB, I'm sorry, acre tract out of Tacot, T-A-C-O-T, sub, and that address is 10692 Interstate Highway 10, Marion, Texas, and a 0.48-acre tract out of ABS 134, and a 5020, which is a little over half-acre tract, out of ABS 134 at 10704 IH 10, and a three-acre tract out of ABS 134, and that address is 10710 IH 10, Texas, and a 0.834-acre tract out of ABS 134, and that address is 7141 Lenny Road, and a 2.15-acre at Motts Commercial Lot 4 over at 133 Motts, a 1.95-acre at Motts Commercial Lot 3, also at 155 Motts, and a 2.09-acre at Motts Commercial Lot 2, 177 Motts, a 1.83-acre at Motts Commercial Lot 1, 191 Motts, which is a 1.83-acre, and Motts Commercial Lot 9, which is located at 184 Motts Road, a 1.5-acre at Motts Commercial Lot, which is 901, private access easement, and a 2.09-acre tract, Motts Commercial Lot 8, address 168 Motts, and a six-acre tract of land at ABS 134 located at 1463 Bolton Road, and generally located along the I-10 corridor. Rick Fescas, welcome, Rick.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a city-initiated rezoning. The properties you listed are illustrated on the map in front of you in the lilac-colored areas. The hash mark is the city's ETJ, and the green area is the city's city limits. This is a mixed-use, the proposal is to change the zoning from mixed-use residential district to light industrial district. It's on 270 acres, approximately 23 tracts, and the land uses surrounding the sites are generally agricultural, industrial, excavation, manufacturing, construction, commercial, office, and many vacant tracts. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on June 11th this month, and unanimously, they are recommending approval of the change from Muir to Light Industrial. There were 48 property owners notified within 200 feet of the properties that will be rezoned. Two notices were returned back in favor, none in opposition. The 2024 Comprehensive Plan under the Land Use Actions, L-10, guides the staff to recommend approval since the document says that we should ensure land uses along major commercial corridors support appropriate commercial, industrial, and institutional uses. The Economic Development Plan calls for these points in terms of land use and along I-10 as well. And the Sybalo Tomorrow IH 10 Corridor Plan, Objective L-3, talks about amending the UDC to align with the vision and uses along the I-10 Corridor Plan. The I-10 Framework Plan recommends light industrial and business parks. It also identifies a significant development opportunity in Catalyst Area 3, which is a former racetrack, and it talks about aligning the I-10 expansion into the Sybalo arterial road network. The 2024 Future Land Use Map suggests that it was adopted as part of the 2024 Sybalo Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan, and the subject properties are designated in that plan as Light Industrial, according to the Flume. With that, Planning and Zoning Commission again recommended unanimously to approve the zoning from Muir to Light Industrial.
Thank you, Rick. All right. The time is 6:58 PM. I'm gonna open up the public hearing to anybody in the audience that has any comments about this rezoning, any landowners or potential interested parties. Please come on up to the microphone. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing also at 6:58 PM. We're gonna move on to item number seven, citizens to be heard. This is the only time during the council meeting that a citizen can address the city council. It is an opportunity for visitors and guests to address the city council on any issue to include agenda items. All visitors wishing to speak must fill out the sign-in roster prior to the start of the meeting. The city council may not deliberate any non-agenda issue, nor may any action be taken on any non-agenda issue at this time. However, the city council may present any factual response to items brought up by citizens according to Attorney General Opinion JCO 169. Limit of three minutes each. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Remarks may also be addressed to any individual member of the council so long as the remarks are about matters of local public concern and not disruptive to the meeting or threatening to the member or any attendee, including city staff. Any person violating this policy may be requested to leave the meeting, but no person may be requested to leave or forced to leave the meeting because of the viewpoint expressed. This meeting is livestreamed. If anyone would like to make comments on any matter regarding the city of Sybalo or on an agenda item and have the item read at the meeting, please email citysecretary@sybaltx.gov or call 210-566-6111 before 5:00 PM, the date of the meeting. We have several people signed up. We're gonna start with Maggie Titterington. Welcome, Maggie. Did you want to speak about anything else, or you get after your, okay. All right. Thanks, Maggie. Next up is Lauren Dalton.
Oh, I just signed in.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And that's the same for Ann Dalton.
Okay. And same for Ann Dalton. Okay. Thank you. All right. All right, next up is Kristen Graft. Kristen? Okay, and then Erin, you good? Okay, and then Victoria Peters? Welcome, Victoria, how you doing?
Hi, I'm good. I'm an Eagle Scout with the Troop 512 of Scouts of America and I'm currently working towards my Eagle Scout rank. And I would like to propose a community-focused project aimed at cleaning and enhancing a pond located behind the HEB in Sibolo. This pond is a popular gathering spot with many members of the community coming to fish and relax and enjoy the outdoors. Unfortunately, this area has become layered with trash, both in the water and along the surrounding grounds, and it lacks proper waste disposal and signage to promote cleanliness. My project would involve organizing a thorough cleanup of the pond and its surrounding area, installing additional trash cans and recycling bins and placing educational signs that encourage recycling and discourage littering. This goal is not only to improve the current conditions of the area but also providing a long-term solutions that will help keep it clean and enjoyable for the community in the future.
Thank you very much for volunteering to help clean up the pond for your Eagle Scout project. If you could please get with our city manager, Mr. Wayne Reed, he's the man right there, and then get his contact information and then he'll put you in touch with the right city staff members to work with to get that scheduled. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Victoria. Okay, thanks again, Victoria. Okay, and so we have two emails. Is that you, Valerie? Okay, thank you.
The first email is from Seaward John Folen III. As a driver and customer, both of Grampy's Pizza, I think we can all agree they are an exemplary business model and trust that they will be as responsible as we, the people, and trust them with continued excellent service with TABC licensing. I'm not sure this is proper English or maybe just a long statement, but hopefully you all understand what I'm saying. I had to read the whole thing. Seaward John Folen III. S-E-W-A-R-D. And our second one is from Pete Thompson. I am submitting the following questions to be read aloud during the Citizens to Be Heard portion of tonight's council meeting. Mayor and city council members, I'm requesting factual responses and transparency to the following. My questions pertain to the recent direction at previous council meetings regarding 360-degree evaluations for positions reporting to the city council. Did the city council conduct a 360-degree evaluation for both the city manager and the city secretary? If yes, when will the results of these evaluations be available for an open records request? If the evaluation was conducted only for the city manager and not for the city secretary, the other position that reports directly to council, what was the reason for this decision? Pete Thompson.
Thank you, Val. All right, next up is item number eight, which is the Consent Agenda. All items listed below are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the council member requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda. We have item A, approval of the minutes from the special city council meeting held on the 10th of June. We have B, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting held on June 10th. C, approval of the final plat of Venado Crossing Unit 6. We have a motion for those items or did you want to pull one, Joel?
I want to pull C.
Okay, so you want to make a-
Vote for everything.
Okay. You want to make a motion for A and B?
Make a motion to pull C from the consent.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so-
I have something on 8B. There needs to be a correction to 10F. It shows in there that there was a vote of 7-0, but showing that one council member was against this particular motion. Can that be corrected, please? Thank you.
Okay, so with those corrections, do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda item. A, B, A and B.
Second.
Okay, please vote on your screens. Katie seconded it. Motion carries, 7-0. And then for C, did you have some questions about that one, Joel?
I don't have any questions. I'm just not down for approving this one at this time.
Okay. What's that, Katie?
I'm because- Well, you read it, read through it, you know, they took five years and we still haven't, I mean, it took a long time. That was a PUD that we put in there and they were supposed to pay for the lift station. I mean, we can go down that rabbit hole, but where they're going to go out and they're talking about connecting to Respy Road, I know that they'll still have I-10, I mean, FM 78, but if, where they will dump out on the Respy Road, they cannot travel one way or the other because whenever it flooded, I mean, it flooded the other day and there's no way to get in or out along a Respy Road, so it's still a one-way and one-way out, so.
Thank you, Joel. And so some of my concerns are about the amenities that were offered or that were promised to the homeowners when they were building that community. And so I'm concerned about the lack of amenities and the timeline for those. And so I think that you're on the right track, Joel, as far as not approving until we get some, did you have some comments on that? Go ahead.
Yes, sir. In terms of the amenities, we actually had staff as well as Public Works, city engineer, other reviewing bodies within the city, had a pre-development meeting with the developer in regards to the amenity center for Venado Crossing. That took place on June 3rd and they have submitted a building permit, so it's currently in review right now. That's the status of the amenity center for this subdivision.
Thank you.
Well, one other thing since we're discussing it, Mayor, you know, we hear it all the time, especially when those PUDs were popping up every, every other council meeting, a PUD was coming to us. And they haven't, they've got a lot of homes going up, but no commercial. And it bothers me because that's exactly what happened is we gave them a PUD and my fear is we approve this, I'll be off council, you'll be off council, most of us will be off council in five years. They just drag their feet for another five years, they come back and turn it all into homes. I'm not saying that we don't need homes, but at this time, their promise was multifamily homes and commercial and they've struggled to just get homes. It just, it's bothersome to me. This is one of those, another reason why those PUDs just sometimes, I mean, some people might be able to make it work, but here in the city of Sibolo, I mean, look at Santicos, we still don't have the apartments up there. It's bothersome that we've got all these PUDs that we approve and then nothing happens that falls short.
Yep, valid concerns, thank you very much for raising them, Joel.
Thank you, Mayor.
Katie, did you have some comments?
I threw my paper in the trash already because I can only find one paper. How many units would this take the neighborhood to? I know it's in your packet, I just don't have the paper anymore.
The number of lots?
Yes.
The number of lots are 76 residential lots and three drainage lots.
So for this, for this section, but with the neighborhood as a whole?
As a whole, I think they're close to, I'll have to pull up their land study that was approved back in 2017, but that was around, it's around the 1,000 lot mark.
Okay, for the whole thing at completion? But as of right now, with the five units that are there, do you know about how many? Is it about 70 per unit? Would that be an okay estimate? I'm just trying to figure out how many are there when we're putting more in and we still don't have a second exit, that concerns me. Steel Creek has a lot of houses, I drove through there a few weeks ago and all the way in the back, like it's huge and they only have one exit still and I don't want to create that issue in another neighborhood if we don't have to. I appreciate you asking about the amenities, you're learning how to be psychic, which is impressive, we should give you a raise. That is a concern that we have, the traffic is obviously a concern that we have, the flooding issue with this recent rain is a valid concern. I'm not necessarily opposed to approving a final, a final, whatever, we're approving the final plat, could not remember that word. I'm not opposed to approving it, I'm just really concerned with the progression forward. Like Joel said, it is taking a long time for them to do the different phases and there is no commercial yet, the stoplight's not there yet, there's other things that haven't happened yet and if it keeps dragging out either because the economy or whatever, whatever the factors may be, I'm concerned that it may never happen.
Ms. Cunningham, they do have the pedestals.
They do have them out there now?
Out there now, they've just got to install the lights.
Okay, and I know that's more of a text dot issue and there, a whole other-
But you're absolutely right, but the pedestals, they came a lot sooner than what me and the former mayor fought and fought and fought for Main Street here to get the eye lights right here at this intersection. They popped them up really quick.
So I guess just in general, I'm not opposed, but I am very hesitant and I'd like to make sure that y'all are, and I know you're doing your jobs well, but I want to make sure that we are following up and we're making sure that all pieces of this project are moving forward and not just the residential, that we are asking about the commercial too, as well as the amenities and things like that.
Is this one of those items that if we don't, that the stop clock will get us if we don't make a decision? Okay.
That's correct, yes.
All right, and so let's just say hypothetically we were to deny it until the, some of these items are done. I mean, I know, I know, I know commercial probably, we can't, you know, wait on that, but at least the amenity center maybe or a couple of like-
I don't, I don't think that we have specific enough reasons to outright deny. Like if we had an action thing, like the road is falling apart or the sidewalks haven't been fixed or there's a-
Well, the roads did fall apart.
A list, the punch list hasn't been completed or something like that, I think that that would be grounds for us to deny it. I don't think that based on the report and the information from the engineer and from the planning department, I don't think there's any reason except our concerns that I do think are valid. I just don't think that we have any action items that we can give them. The amenity center, they've already done the permit, they're going through that process. The exit, they're working on getting out to a rispy, whether it's a good exit or not, that's the option.
Well, they're gonna-
The stoplight, the pad is there, so I think that they are making some progress, but there is still concern on our end that it's just not happening fast enough.
If you look at the, where they're planning on putting that out, it's going to be right next, it's going to be a lot like what we've got with Buffalo Crossing 2 and the bridge, they're going to have to build some type of bridge there.
For sure.
So I'm just saying, y'all vote the way y'all, I can't vote on this consciously with the way it is because seriously, they're going to, I think they're going to need to put up some type of barriers to where people just can't get out on a rispy road because it does flood in both directions.
Yeah, but then the other, the other side of that is you have one exit for a neighborhood that has-
I know.
Possibly 500-plus residents in it already.
Oh, it's mid 1,000, yeah.
Will have up to 1,000 residents or more and that's a concern. We have Steel Creek that's going to go out onto Tally Road, they don't have an exit right now. Town Creek has much fewer residents, but they only have one exit. We have to stop having these neighborhoods with only one exit because it's dangerous. It's dangerous for, for access, for emergency personnel. If something goes down like Saddle Creek Ranch off of Coy Lane, that line, power line went down, nobody could get into their homes, they had to park on 1103. So I think we can be proactive in that and I think it's, they're showing that they are trying to make an attempt to attach to an existing road. It's not necessarily their fault that our existing roads down there are like a rispy road. They can't fix that. I do, I would like staff to kind of work with them and explain to them the challenges of that road. Maybe they're not aware of it. I would think that they would study that road, but when, when you're a developer, I would understand that you would only be really caring about what you're building and not where it's going. As long as the city says it's okay to go onto the city road, that's really not their issue. So I don't think that that, that concern, I think it's a valid concern, but I don't think that's a developer, an issue the developer can solve.
Okay, so with that said, did you want to make a motion, Katie? Because we need to vote one way or another.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve 8C.
Okay.
Is this 8C? 8C?
Uh, yes, 8C.
8C.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, any second?
I'll second it.
Okay, please vote. Let's see, we're going to do a voice vote for this since we already voted on the seven and eight. Okay, we'll start, vote on that, all right. Close one. All right, motion fails, four to three. Okay, moving on, nine, Staff Update. Administration, Capital Improvement Program, update on projects. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go through the usual updates on capital improvement projects and we have Logan Hill, he's seated to my left right here on the front row, he is with Waste Connections and under the Solid Waste Transition Update, I'm going to let Mr. Hill step up to the podium and give council an update on their outreach to the business community and maybe anything else he would like to add. So let me begin first with the update and as usual, you'll have an email from me before council is out with the information that I'm sharing with you on our CIP. First, Dean Road, D and D pavement repairs. D and D construction is scheduled to begin and complete the asphalt repairs tomorrow, June 25th. One-way traffic will be maintained during the repair operation. Bolton Road, D and D construction is scheduled to begin and complete asphalt repairs on Thursday, June 26th. One-way traffic will be maintained during the repair operation. So it's important to note that it is expected that each repair is just a one day and that's why there'll be one-way traffic during the repairs.
Mr. Reed, on those, if it's only going to take one day?
Yes, sir.
Those are massive cracks, so I've got some concern, I mean-
You're welcome to be out there and observe them as, along with our construction inspectors.
Okay, thank you.
Noble Group Renovations, pre-construction phase. Pre-construction meeting was held June 20th, so last week with our contractor. The contractor will mobilize and begin renovations in early July. Project is expected to be completed within 60 days. Brian Huggins and Julio Gomez will be getting a construction project schedule so that we can keep council up to date as to the timing of the completion of construction. We will be holding them to those 60 days because if you do the math, July, August, that means that we'll have the month of September to move furniture and equipment in and allow the senior program to do some transitioning and get into the facility in the month of September. So we will be keeping you abreast of the timeline as they begin construction. Deer Creek Drainage Improvements, you'll know, you'll remember that I sent you an email after the 100-year flood event that we had on June 12th, we received six to seven inches depending on where you were standing in our community. That was like a 100-year event. We had three areas of damage, one was the Deer Creek Drainage Channel improvements. So those were recent improvements and we are working with the engineer and the contractor for this to be restored. The first question is to our engineer, what happened? The design should have held. So once I get an answer from Julio Gomez, I'll be sharing that with the city council.
Thank you on that because I've gotten several phone calls from individuals over there about that because it was just built and they're trying to figure out, well, I said, well, hopefully we're not paying for it, hopefully the people that, the engineer, they're bonded, the contractors bonded.
That's right, should not have failed.
We should, you're right, okay.
All right, the FY25 Street Rehabilitation Package, number one, under construction. As you know, Deer Creek, with all the rains recently, the work came to a stop, but the ongoing work is in the southbound lane. The project remains on schedule because all these project schedules have weather delays built in, curb and ADA ramp installations are in progress and roadway work will follow once all the flat work, the concrete work is done. Green Valley Road, number one, no update there. Green Valley Road, number two, project remains on schedule, road excavation is complete, flex base will be installed next week. Green Valley Water Main Extension, this is the one that's been around for several months and the back tea testing expected to be completed next week, so everybody's asking, what's a back tea? So this is testing for bacteria in the water line because it's newly constructed. Once it passed that test, then we know that it's good for general use. Site restoration is nearly complete and the reseeding is taking, taking hold. The FM 78 Water Main Extension, this is Buffalo Place to Shady Meadows. Construction begins tomorrow, June 25th. FY25 Street Rehabilitation Package- FY '25 Street Rehabilitation Package, number two, will be presented for contract award at the July 8th City Council meeting. Plans and contract documents are complete, and the streets included are Town Creek Road, Firebird Run, Silverwing.
Katie, go ahead.
So this is not a complaint at all. Stone Brook. They, we got a notice that work would be being done on the bottom half of Stone Brook. They have torn up the entire street. This is a very welcome surprise, but I was wondering what's going on. I drove out today and I was like, or the other day when it first got torn up, and I was like, wait a minute, this isn't where the map showed. So the neighborhood's all bustling about it.
Ms. Cunningham, I know you see that road on database. I do not. Russell Hargrove, our streets superintendent, knows intimately what's going on. He'll answer any and all questions.
Yes, ma'am. Basically with the rain and everything going on, scheduling the asphalt, the demo, so we're demoing a paver. Kind of trying to balance all that out. So the only opening I had was January 8th or July 8th. So we're trying to catch up so we can line everything up to knock that road up.
Okay, awesome. No, we're not complaining at all. This is a very, very welcome surprise. Do you know if there's any plans for Slippery Rock or Capstone? Capstone's a little tiny one that's this way, and then Slippery Rock's the one that runs parallel.
Yeah, there's multiple areas in there. We're gonna try to do level ups and...
Not great.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you so much. They're very, very excited.
Mr. Hargrove, after this road, there's one more road because you did one over in Bentwood Crossing, Bentwood Pass, sorry. Bentwood Ranch.
Bentwood Ranch.
That was a long lane repair on?
Uh, we did Royal Trun. Royal Trun is the one we did. Well, we demoed the other unit. We were able to get a bigger paver, paver and use it out there to repave that road.
Then you're working on this road. There's a third one in this year's pavement preservation plan, and that, what is that road?
We're gonna try to do, since we're getting a Town Creek started, we're gonna try to do in front of Slaughter Park. And then we have a couple of smaller ones in Town Creek Village and Ciblo Vista.
They will all be ecstatic to hear that. Thank you so much.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate those questions, and Mayor and council, you should be very proud of where we are with our capital improvement program. But Russell Hargrove and the men that work on the crew with him, doing these in-house repairs, we weren't doing that four years ago. We've come a long way. We have many miles of roads to do, but we're moving at a pace that wasn't thought of four years ago. Great professionalism by our street crews.
Are you done, Mr. Reed? If not, I get a question.
So I am done on CIP. Everything else, there's no update.
I know we've had a lot of rain.
Yes, sir.
So we got a lot of tall grass.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna get around to that?
Julio Gomez is not here tonight. He's, he's spending some family time with his son with some competitive sports. We can ask, Brian can ask the parks and the drainage crews when we'll be getting around to the areas that we are responsible for mowing. We can send an email to council.
Okay. And then Hakerville Road with all the rain, those potholes have grown.
Okay.
Again.
Hakerville Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mayor and council, I'd like to just, my last update is the solid waste transition update. And Logan, if you'll go up there, my update to you is that after tonight, Nicole Perez will survey the council for some dates to tour the Mesquite Creek Recycling Facility. So this is a waste management recycling facility, but Waste Connections will be using it as part of its contract with us. It's a pretty cool facility. I'm going to send you an email that has an article linked to it from Community Impact. It's a dated article. It's in the past one year. But if you'd like to tour it, we'll work with them to find what dates and times are available. And then we'll take the date that most of you say you are available to go to the facility. With that, Mr. Hill?
Thank you for your time, Mr. Reed. Good evening, Mayor and council. Just giving you guys a quick update on how we're going with the transition period. So right now, obviously, change is always scary between, in any facet in life. The last week and a week and a half, we've roughly seen about 90% of downtown businesses. And right now, the major emphasis is starting to get to all commercial businesses within the city of Ciblo Limits. We've hit about 30% as of right now. We're going to keep on going on that path. Everything in between, it's been pretty seamless on that thing. Everybody's been pretty positive, but that, you know, just like anything else, transition, going from one, one commodity to another can always be a little bit daunting at that piece. But the reality is that it's going from one, one company over to Waste Connections and services being rendered should not be impacted to anybody in that piece. So that's all my update is up for Waste Connections. Is there anything that you would like to ask of me right now? Once again, my name is Logan Hill. I'm the site manager in San Antonio. I'm a proud Ciblo resident, so this is super impactful on my end because not only is it something that I, it has to go right because I live here, but, so one of the things, I do have skin in the game as far as that. So I'm super excited to be part of this transition piece. And we welcome any kind of, you know, constructive criticism where we can kind of go from there. So is there anything that you guys got for me while you have me up here?
No questions? Okay.
I got a question for Randy. Did you go to the waste management facility? I thought you were supposed to, you didn't, okay, okay.
Go ahead, Councilman Mahoney.
Just a quick question about this transition time. I know of two people on my street who are away from home for most of the next month or so.
Okay.
As far as trading out there, trash bins or getting the new ones in, I'd like to help them with that, but I don't know precisely, this may be a detailed kind of question that I should just call you tomorrow about.
Well, I know that we're going to be utilizing a company to deliver all of our carts. Republic has elected to dispose of their carts just due to the nature of the aging carts of bare waste. Most of their commodities out on the road are not within that scope of five years. Typically, a cart is reclaimable within five years, and if it's over five years, it's, it's disposable. So if I would have to guess, and that's a meeting that I know 6:30, we're going to be meeting with Republic and Mr. Reed to kind of go over that transition process, but I know that it's going to be a separate entity. We're going to have Waste Connections, we're subletting a company, and they're going to have one cart, one trash cart, one recycle cart, unless otherwise stated, which I know that Maggie and Mr. Reed have been kind of updating me, and we'll get those ones that have additional carts. But for the rest of them, Republic, as far as I know, I kind of think that they're going to be doing their, their disposal in-house for their carts. If, hopefully that answers your question.
And if I could add, Mr. Mahoney, any resident who will be gone around July 7th through the 21st and therefore unable to leave their old carts out front, they can call Maggie at our, I shouldn't just say Maggie, our utility billing office, and inform them that they will be away. Our staff will work with Waste Connections to make arrangements for those properties.
Anything else?
One more. Are you suggesting that Republic is maybe just going to abandon all these trash bins?
No, no, they'll, they'll pick them up. They just not... Yeah, they, anything that probably has bare waste on there probably is going to be disposed of or recycled in some sort of fashion. But no, they, I, I would highly doubt that Republic would leave, leave all that stuff on the street. That would cause a lot of chaos.
In fact, our neighboring city, they're going through that right now, Mr. Mahoney. You ask Allison, Ms. Hayward, but they're going through that process right now. Republic picking them up. They're not going to abandon, no.
Mayor and council, the last comment I have is we are having a transition meeting where what Mr. Hill referred to. Republic Services is coming in to meet with Waste Connections and the city staff. This happened in Shirts as well. It's just a friendly, cooperative meeting in which we have understanding of how Republic Services will be pulling its residential and commercial infrastructure while Waste Connections is coming in in timely and coordinated way, placing the new information, the new infrastructure in place. So we are doing that here in the next week. Also, I don't know if you've received your Community Impact, but it has a sticker on the front. Have you all received your Community Impact with the sticker on the front?
Yes.
Okay. I have not received it at my house, and I was like, where is it? This one was at City Hall. When did you all receive your Community Impact?
About a week ago, maybe a little longer than a week.
Two weeks ago? So anyways, I saw this in the office today, so I thought I'd pull it out, just make sure you all have received it.
I do have a question. Are these cans to be marked? Because like Ms. Donetta Roberts said, she's got ones from Republic that say Virginia on them.
Okay.
And I've seen, I mean, you're just the only one. I've seen them around. But are we going to have markings on them that say Ciblo, or they're going to say Waste?
They will say Waste Connection, sir. And so you will have a blue trash can with a blue lid that will be for the commodity for trash. Blue, blue can with a yellow lid that will have a stamp on the top that will insinuate recycling on there.
Okay.
And each resident, we're electing, when they're delivering the containers, it should have a GPS launch and lat and will be coded with the serial number for the customer.
Okay.
So if somebody has some sort of, hey, my cart went missing, it should have a 10-digit serial number of where that, that cart is.
One mark of mine anyway with the...
Very good.
And Mayor and council, Ms. Simics reminded me that I had already provided her dates. So dates have already been provided. She's already sent that to all of you. We'll be sharing with you the date that has the most responses, so. Thank you. Unless you have more questions from Mr. Hill, we are done with the city manager's administrative update.
All right. Thank you for your time, Mayor and council.
Thank you. All right. Next up is 10A, ordinance, approval, disapproval of an ordinance granting a variance to Grandpa's, Grampy's, excuse me, Grampy's Pizzeria located at 121 Ciblo Commons, Suite 101, to allow for the sale of beer and wine within 300 feet of a public school. And so I just want to remind everybody that this is going to take all seven members of council to vote on it. Right, all seven members need to vote, and then of the seven, six need to be in affirmative in order for this to pass. So I know we have one council member that stepped away, so I'm not going to call for a vote quite yet, but we can open it up to discussion. Do we have any discussion that we want to talk about?
I, I just, I've known Aaron for many, many years, and it's not that I'm against them having it. I guess my question would be, I know that Catalanos for a long time did a BYOB. If it's because you want to have liquor there or beer there, there is that option to do a BYOB where they can bring it. Because I don't know how much you're going to make off of selling it, but well, no, but you, the, the law has to do with selling and consuming. It's, the law is consuming and selling. It's not, because they sell...
Consuming, if they bring their own, they'd still be consuming.
Right, but they're not selling.
Right. I just don't see if we're, if we're thinking about, no, I understand that. I think that if we're talking about rejecting it because it's alcohol within distance of a school, but then we're like, well, you can have people BYOB, as long as we're not selling it by a school, you can bring it. I don't, if the harm is that it's alcohol, then that solution doesn't address the harm. The harm isn't in a sale of something. They could be selling Twizzlers. The harm isn't in a sale. Like the exchange of money is not a harm. I think the harm that has been expressed, or has, at least that I've heard, is that it's alcohol. And there's a concern about alcohol as a quote-unquote controlled substance for people over 21 and the concern of that being near a school. And that's why the ordinance was proposed years ago. It was to prevent alcohol. So if we're saying, well, BYOB is fine, it's still alcohol.
If I could finish what I was gonna go with is you've got houses that back up all along there. I can assure you, those people are having parties and drinking. That, that's where I'm going with it. But, but because the law says that if you sell alcohol and consume it, it's against the law. Because you can sell it at Walmart, that's where people get, get confused. You can sell it there. You go into any, any convenience store, you go to QuickTrip, it says you cannot consume it. You can buy it there, but it's illegal to consume it. There's a law for that, that you can't consume it.
Is that a state law?
Yes.
The state says that they cannot consume alcohol within a certain distance from a school?
No, on, on that property. So, but it also contingency with the school in a 300-foot.
So we cannot override state law. If a state law is more stringent than what our city law is, we cannot override it.
Correct.
The state supersedes us in that case. If the city is more stringent, then the city law would supersede the state at that point. So the law that says it cannot be consumed within a certain distance from the school, is that a city law that we have the ability to vote a variance on? Or is that a TA, TC, whatever, TC? I wanted to say TCBY, and I know that's not right. If, if it's a state law or whatever, then we, it doesn't matter what we vote because we cannot supersede that. So I just want clarification. Is there a state law that prohibits this, that we cannot supersede? Or does our law, or is our ordinance the one that we are discussing now?
Paul, view mine?
The TABC rules are state law, and so those, those are the rules that, that ultimately govern what it is that can and can't be done. A variance can be provided under, there's more state law included under TABC that you can provide certain variances to what the state law is. And so if the city has a law, it's on its own books, under an ordinance, the cities has to follow along with what the, the state law is, so.
So we cannot be less restrictive than the state and say that we're okay?
Yes.
So my question is, does state law prohibit us from allowing this?
From allow, I'm sorry, allowing...
From allowing a business to serve, consume, sell whatever alcohol within a certain distance from a school. So our ordinance from the city is the one that's, that we're doing a variance for. I just don't...
That's correct.
I don't want to have something come before us. We've gone through this whole process. They're asking for a variance of a city ordinance, but then it doesn't matter if we pass it. And we say, you can sell it inside the school, go ahead. If there's a state law that prohibits it, then it doesn't matter what we vote on, and we've just gotten through this long process for no reason. That's just what I want clarification on.
Right.
Is do we have the power to even do anything about this?
You do, and that's by state law.
Okay.
You do. So the state itself says this, the municipality
Okay.
has the authority, is authorized to vary from the requirements of the state law.
Okay. So we are, if this is approved, we are within our
That's correct.
legal, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Donetta, any questions or comments? Norma?
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments. Obviously, it's coming before us for a variance, right? I, what I heard is with Grampys is that they needed a change of their business model. I also understand that it's directly across from a school. I feel that there's a way to compromise here just as well. I feel like it would be a great situation to, I know students also go to Grampys, and if maybe there is a possibility to start the alcohol sales, let's say, when school is out, off-school hours, that way, when the kids go to, let's say, Grampys or going to the restaurant, there are no alcohol sales, but then there are through the evenings and through the weekends. And I feel this is pretty consistent in that 30% of sales, no more than. So, so I feel like it kind of satisfies that just as well. Those are just my thoughts on it. It kind of, it, it does both things. It helps the need of a different business model to provide for alcohol sales, but then it also helps protect the students just as well during school hours. Those are my just thoughts.
Thank you, Norma. Anything else, Katie? Okay. Well, I mean, I'm a big supporter of Ciblo businesses, and I think that this would be a good opportunity for all of us on council to help step up and support a Ciblo business. Councilman Mahoney?
Yeah, I've, I've thought long and hard about this. I have a grandson that's a student at Steel. I've even asked... I've even asked him about it and a number of other people. There's, I'm in favor of this, I'll just make it clear. There's, there's some neighbors of mine that have asked me about it and I found that there's some misunderstandings going around. Not on the council necessarily, but some people don't understand that there's a TABC license that they would have to obtain to have wine and beer sales. There's another separate TABC license, being concerned that people in there are gonna drink too much and come out and be a nuisance on the roadways. Well, there's, there's a number of places that I can think of just like this, that they aren't particularly a nuisance on the roadway. I was, I was one of those guys in a uniform lurking around outside those places for many years, watching up in the Dallas area. And I know what they're talking about, but I've been in this place and I've been up and down the road and I just don't see the potential downside of this at all. So I'm definitely in favor of this.
Thank you, Council. Randy Roberts, anything?
I don't, I honestly don't have any objection to this. It's, the law, state law's clear and we're just following the ordinance we've established.
Thank you, sir. Jeff?
So on this council, we've talked long and hard about small business outreach and I think that's great. This is a small business reaching out to us. You know, I met with your family, what, last summer, I think? And, you know, you told me that when you moved in, you had no intent of doing this and due to economic times, you had to rethink your business model completely, understand. I also understand the concern about being across from Steele High School. I have a soon-to-be junior there, so it was not lost on me. Kind of went through the concerns that I had as a parent and then the concerns I heard from other folks in the neighborhood. One of those being underage sales. I was a teenager once. I would not go to the pizza parlor that's directly across the street from where my teachers work, where likely my friends' parents would see me. If I was gonna do that, no offense to Grampys, but that's not where I would do it as a teenager. You know, Mr. Mahoney brought up a point about whether or not these folks would be a nuisance. You know, per this ordinance, you can only generate 30% of your revenue from the sale of alcohol and wine, or, excuse me, beer and wine. Which means it's not gonna be a spot for folks to go after work and just knock back beers, because they're gonna have to buy food. If I want to go have beers with my friends after work, I'll go someplace, and I'm not hungry. I'll go a place that's not gonna mandate essentially or strongly encourage that I get a slice of pizza. So I think concerns from the public are valid. It's not, I don't think it's just a check-the-mark thing, but, you know, I've kind of run through the different issues that have been brought up. And spoken with members of our staff to determine to what degree are those concerns, I don't want to say valid because they're valid, but to what degree they think it's gonna actually present a nuisance to our city. So with all that being said, I've run through it and I would be in support of this.
Thank you, Jeff. And so since this does require a rather large margin of votes, did you want to make an amendment to the, to the motion, Norma, as far as the hours?
I would like to make an amendment to the hours.
Okay.
That would help with the majority.
If you don't mind if you could make the motion and then with the hours included. As far as like, no alcohol sales during school hours, is that what you were thinking? Okay, all right.
So that would include the holidays and so forth.
For Steele, right.
Oh, just during...
Okay, Jeff, do you have a question for the attorney?
Yes, sir. Do we even have the authority to restrict hours?
Yes, sir, you do. And the state law allows, allows for that and that variance. It can be conditional for, for the hours of service.
So we got the authority and this would really only pertain to like, maybe their lunch sales on weekdays, you know? For the most part, they'd be okay.
So when we put a restriction or a rule in place, then that requires a type of accountability. So how are we going to, what's the response? If they decide to sell it during school hours, what happens?
There is the ability of, the city council is authorized to revoke that variance.
Okay.
Did you want to make the motion, Norma?
Oh, I have, I'm sorry, I have one more question. I apologize. Where, you're storing the alcohol, it's not gonna be like an ice bin out front with bottles of beer, correct? It's gonna be behind the counter? So it would be, I've been in there, you never don't have someone behind the counter. There is always someone standing there. That counter's real tall, I don't see anyone, maybe a teenager. I for sure can't jump the counter. But I don't foresee someone just walking up and swiping a bottle of beer or anything. I don't, I don't, I just, I understand the concern of it being near a school. I understand the concern of kids getting alcohol despite knowing that kids, if they really want it, they'll figure out a way to get it. I just, I really don't, with this specific situation, I do not see that that would be a valid concern. I don't, I don't see how it could happen, just logically. There's, there would be limited access to it. They would have to purchase it. They're right across the street from their school during the school day. They only have an hour, 40, 30 minutes, if you're an underclassman with off-campus lunch. Just logistics don't, wouldn't allow for it. So I understand why it's being proposed to not sell during school hours. I just don't see why it would need to be.
I get you and I think that that makes sense if it's for just a simple majority. I totally get it, but I, but due to the, it's either this or nothing, you know what I mean? Like, and so, so, do you want to make your motion? Come on up. Come on up, yeah. And, yeah, just let us know if you like this idea or not, or, okay.
Yeah. No, just to address that, she's absolutely right. There would be a behind-the-counter cooler that would be nowhere in reach of anybody getting to it but an employee. And those of you who have been to our restaurant, you have to literally go all the way around just to get behind our counter. You, or you would have to literally crawl over. And in that case, I'm thinking that something else is gonna happen and I carry a pizza paddle pretty much, you know? I don't think anybody wants to do that.
You'll basically reach the ovens before you reach the beer counter.
Right.
So like, yeah.
No, no, that's not even an issue. It's not gonna be a beer tub that you can reach into. It's not gonna be accessible at all. There's not gonna be even a cooler out there where you can reach into. It is actually going to be, our plan is to put it right under, we actually bought a cooler because we started selling horritos or Mexican cokes, so. And we needed one and we were like, well, if we get it, then great, we have something. So, but it is currently under that front counter and that's all.
I just cannot see a situation with, in which it would be easily accessible for kids to get it.
Not at all.
At Taco Palenque and at Harman's, they have beer bins out there with ice. Like that, a kid could shove it up their sleeve or whatever. Behind the counter, with your counters as high as they are, with the blocks on them as they are blocking the pizza ordering section and the salad bar. I don't, I know, I've got four, believe me, kids are wild, but I just don't see that it would be something that would go unnoticed. In my experiences at the restaurant and the timeframe, lunch is very short for kids. If they wanted to get alcohol, they'd just keep it in their car or they'd do something else. It would be, they would have to want the challenge of going and doing it. Like, it would be, it would take a lot of effort. There's a lot of other ways to do bad things.
They really have to want to do that.
Than to go this route, so.
So one interesting fact, from our first year to this last year, we noticed a huge decline in students that have come for lunchtime. They changed, they got a new principal, I don't know if that has anything to do with it, but they did change the bell schedule. They do not have as much time in between classes. Therefore, we lost a lot of those students from what we had from the first year until the second. We generally see the same students every single day and that's just because they have ample time to do what they want to do. So it's really not in, I mean, we see probably more students after school than we would during the school hours. If that gives, sheds any light on that. Honestly, more folks, we get more blue collar and more people from our business come around and neighborhood people and fam, you know, families come throughout the daytime than we do students.
We also get a lot of retirees, especially on Mondays, because we do Military Monday where we do 20% off, like all pizzas. So we get, we actually get a lot of folks, older folks that do actually want a beer during lunch as well. So that, that's a little bit of a concern for us as well, but in terms of addressing the time issue. So, but yeah, we see more kids after school and we actually have, I guess somewhat related but not, we have a, we have a blunting plan against the whole schedule, trying to get, maybe get more kids. And we'd ask our kids, like, what would attract them to come to Grampys for lunch? And a lot of them are like, oh, super cool and on their phones and they want, they're like, order online. So we've actually talked about telling a lot of kids that. And that, right, that right there would take off alcohol sales possibility in the first place. If they're getting a slice and a soda online and coming to pick it up and leaving, there's no, there's like no possibility for them to even look at or consider alcohol, so.
Anyway, the bottom line is yes, they have no access or anywhere near to it. And there's no plan ever to put that out there. What, like, you're just asking for trouble as an owner to do, if you do something like that, so.
And I'm sure he can tell you that we have no problems being strict with any things at all, so.
Okay. So, so we kind of gotta wrap it up a bit. And we're gonna allow one more question. Councilman Mahoney?
Aaron?
Aaron, one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilman Mahoney?
Yes?
Yes, sir.
Just a question and, let me see how to word this. Have you ever, ever been cited for selling alcohol to a minor?
Me?
Yes.
As an owner?
Right. And, and the real question, I guess, is, are you willing to take a chance on something like that?
So let me, let me give you a little history. I know we need to wrap it up, so I'm gonna try to keep it simple. So I actually started my restaurant career straight out of college. I put myself through college working at a local pizzeria in Lubbock, Texas, at Texas Tech University. That's kind of where I fell in love with Guns Up. That's how I fell in love with pizza. From there, I actually end up, and it's a long story, but it's where I really took off my career. I end up hooking up with a gentleman that had some restaurants there in Lubbock and he needed a manager. And I joined him and it was a oyster bar that I frequented, frequented often as a consumer and drank beer there many times. Well, he made me a manager because he needed one and that's after talking to him. So I worked for that man for 11 years. I opened four different locations. I even went out to Virginia and opened another location and it was a full-fledged bar. Nightlife, we had, it was kind of a nightclub. We had bands, we had all kinds of stuff. And never in my history have I ever had any issues with any selling of minors or any alcoholic-related incidents. From there, I end up joining a company called Texas Wings, DBA Hooters of Texas, before they got bought out. That's where I've met you first. And I ran pretty much all of them here in San, in the San Antonio area. And those of you who are familiar, those are, sorry, threw you under the bus. And those of you that are familiar with that concept, like, that's a very difficult and crazy atmosphere. You have young ladies walking around and, you know, and you have all kinds of troubles. Never in my whole career did I ever have any kind of issues with that. So I was in the bar business a total of about 19 years. I joined Raising Cane's and did that 11 years. They didn't sell a lick of alcohol and I was very happy doing it. And that's when we opened this business model. It was one of the things that we were like, no, we really don't want to. Yeah, there's some other places around us that do. We've done well, we've learned it 11 years, we don't need it. But as we explained, like, as the economic, it's changed, things have changed. There's so many places that have moved in now or are coming that we kind of feel like we need to at least provide something simple to our neighbors and our customers. So the answer to your question, no, I've never had an issue and I have plenty of experience as does she.
Yeah.
I appreciate the answer. What I was, I guess what I was getting at is, you're not willing to take the chance about something happening with one of these minors in our city. It looks, it appears to me, you know the law, you don't want to risk any of that, you think it would be wrong. And do we, do we trust you to do the right thing and maintain that?
This is our livelihood, like, this is everything to us. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to wrap it up. I'm long-winded bad enough as it is without inviting you...
I'm sorry.
To also get long-winded.
Way to go.
I know.
I just think we need to keep this simple and approve it as is. I have great faith that there will not be problems down there any worse than there are anywhere else in the environment and then all.
Okay. Very good. Okay, so, so maybe we can take a run at it as is and if that doesn't work, then we can do another, go at it.
Make a motion to approve 10A.
I'll second.
Okay, so please vote on your screens. Okay, so that one didn't get enough votes. And so do we want to make another motion with the restriction, Norma?
Yes, I just feel like we have to also consider the other side. I feel like this compromise does both. I understand that the, you have your military days. I feel like that can also be shifted possibly to a weekend where your military can come in and do that. And I was gonna say one more thing and it just slipped my mind, but I'll just go ahead and make the motion. Oh, I was gonna mention, I know that your statement said that kids also do come after hours. That goes to any other establishments like Mod Pizza and so forth. But I feel like as a council body, we should attempt, at least during those school hours, directly across from the school, to find a medium balance. And, and I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve granting a variance to Grampys Pizzeria, located at 121 Siblo Commons, Suite 101, to allow for the sale of beer and wine within 300 feet of a public school, not within school hours of Steele High School.
I'll second that.
I'd like to make a motion to add an amendment to that, to revisit this variance in six months and possibly remove the restriction on time. I mean, I think it's silly that we're doing it in the first place, but, I mean, we're, we're talking about telling, directing them how to do their business plan. We're saying you need to shift the days that you do stuff. People do special things on Mondays because that's a slow business day. Like, there's a specific reason. They have to come to us for a variance for this, but why? Why? We let Walmart sell, we let all these other businesses sell close to schools, close to churches, all this other stuff. It's just, sell but not...
Mr. Mayor, there, just as a point of order or a procedural lead, there was a motion with a second.
Okay, so, so we need to vote on that and then, and then we can make another motion, Katie?
Okay, I thought I needed to make the amendment prior to, that's how our old attorney made us do it, so, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. If we could please vote on our screens. Let's get this one done. All right, there you go. Okay, so 6-2-1. So that is a, that does pass. And then Katie, if you wanted to make your motion about revisiting...
I want to make a motion to revisit this in a period of time, six months to nine months, whatever agenda we can get it on then. If the business owners would bring us, I don't know even what kind of date we're looking for, how many teenagers are visiting during whatever hours. It just, it seems very punitive and very big-brother-y of us to limit hours of a business. We don't do it for any other business or that we're granting a variance for. It just seems very silly and very, it seems silly. But I'd like to revisit this in six months.
Second.
Okay, so let's, let's do a voice vote on this one since it's not on the, okay. Okay, thank you. All right, very good. Okay. Right, okay, so, yeah, so this will come back in six months as a, you know, temperature check and see if it's still needed, so, okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Grampys. Appreciate it. All right, next up is 10B, Approval Disapproval of Amending Ordinance 1265 and Updating the City of Siblo Tax Abatement Policy and Guidelines and Criteria for Governing Tax Abatement Incentives Within the City Limits of Siblo and the ETJ. Clancy Harden, come on up, buddy. Clancy Harden, come on up, buddy.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. Come before you with a, uh, request to amend ordinance one two six five, which governs our abatement policy related to economic development. The previous abate, abatement policy, uh, it sunsetted, um, so we were required to bring this back. Uh, just a little bit of history on this policy. It was originally adopted, uh, May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, by unanimous vote of this body. And this ordinance, uh, provides criteria and a framework paired with, uh, guidelines to govern how we, uh, apply economic development, uh, abatement incentives with projects. Uh, happy to answer any questions. I will make a, a note that the motion on the bottom was a different agenda item when I wrote the sample motion. Please disregard that.
There's no changes, just it's a sunset rule, right?
Correct.
It didn't have any changes to it.
We clarified some language related to director...
If so, I would've expected red line in here if there were any changes, but I didn't see any changes.
Okay, so this is just a renew?
Yep.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilman Hicks. Please vote. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Clancy.
Thank you.
All right, next up is item eleven A, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the City of Cibolo, Texas, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation's Safe Streets and Roads for All SS four A Demonstration Grant Program and committing a twenty percent local match requirement. Oh, you're not Mr. Gomez.
I am not Mr. Gomez. I don't have a whole lot more hair, but I do have a little bit more hair than he does. Uh, so, yes, uh, Mayor, Council, this is a request for approval resolution for the Public Works Department to submit a grant to the Texas, I mean, the Texas, U.S. Department of Transportation for the Straits, Streets for All program. Uh, this would be a demonstration grant to replace, uh, some signal lights at Borgfeld and Cibolo Valley Drive and Borgfeld and Dees Roads. Uh, those signal lights at those intersections are outdated and frankly, the equipment is so outdated that the, their manufacturer's not making repairs, uh, replacement parts anymore. So, we were asking for this grant to replace that light, those light fixtures. These actual lights, uh, provide the opportunity for our Public Works Department to monitor them live and to make adjustments to them, um, online. So they don't have to go out there and actually manually touch them anymore. They can actually get online and, and make adjustments to the, the lights as they are, so, very, uh, uh, much more technologically advanced than what we have now. So this, this would be a sixty thousand dollar grant, uh, with a twenty percent match, so the city would be responsible for twelve thousand dollars. The funding would come from, uh, CIP savings from this year, so we have the funding for it. I'm just asking for the council to approve the resolution.
So twelve thousand...
Make a motion to approve eleven A.
Second.
Any questions? Anybody have first? Anybody? Okay, all right, so we got a motion and a second. Joel? All right, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Mayor Brian.
All right, next up is twelve A, discussion action on a master gardener for the Ron Peed Community Garden, Councilwoman Donetta Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, is Rachel here? Oh, there she is. I just wanted to have Rachel come and give a quick synopsis of what was approved by the master gard-, Wallop County Master Gardening, um, and kinda what her vision is for this particular, uh, community.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. Thank you, uh, for allowing me to speak. The Ron Peed Community Revitalization Project, which is, could be renamed, that's just what I wanted to call it, um, is to, intended to foster community engagement, promote sustainable practices, enhance local biodiversity and provide educational opportunities for all ages. Through collaborative efforts, uh, this initiative will create a vibrant green space that will benefit the community as a whole, the environment and our native wildlife. So, for Texas Master Gardeners, this is our bread and butter. Earth stewardship, uh, education, that's what our whole thing is, that's what we do. Um, and that is what we intend to do with this garden, once we, um, get access and able to work in there. Uh, the end goal, of course, is to have a beautiful space that we can have, um, festivals at, markets at. We can have classrooms, it's like an outside classroom there. Uh, we can have field trips, we can have honor society, FFA students, uh, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, come in and do activities there in the garden. Um, and it would be a hub for just the community to get together and, um, you know, collaborate and feel like they belong. At this point, uh, we plan to, with the earth, earth stewardship, um, we're gonna rebuild and nurture the space, um, using sustainable regenerative, regenerative, that's a hard word for me, processes. And we're going to implement composting, mulching, cover cropping to revi- vitalize the soil naturally. We're gonna incorporate Texas natives, things that will stand the heat of Texas. Um, and it's water-wise, because we're in the drought, even though we did have a flood recently. Um, we still want to, um, have drought tolerant crops, um, just to, to minimize our water usage. Um, the hope is, uh, obviously down the line, it's not gonna be automatic, but, uh, down the line, we would like to offer workshops and classes, um, on gardening basics, composting, um, the natives' plants that are there in our, our garden, we can actually do tours. Partnering with the schools in the area, there's many schools, um, elementary schools, high schools. Uh, there's students that need volunteer hours for the honor society. Um, there's badges that, um, scouts can get, uh, like identifying plants. Those are things that we can do in the garden, those possibilities. Uh, for the engaging community, uh, we'd have scheduled volunteer days. Um, one example would be, um, like the revival of the Ron Peed Garden, where we go in and we rip out all the old weeds and put them in a pile and get rid of them and it's all brand new and put new seeds in the dirt that we just uncovered. And it's, we water it and it's growing, it's great. Um, that, we can also offer plots to, um, these organizations so that they can actually plant what they want. If a class is doing something on lima beans, the class can come in and they would have a plot of soil that's already ready for them and they can do a, a class and plant whatever. Lima beans are probably not the best example. But it would be available for, um, for the schools and other community groups. Um, I know that we have, um, several other places that we have an opportunity to, um, engage the community. The Brooks of Cibolo is right there as well, um, as all the schools. And we also have, um, our senior center that, um, is right down the road on Main Street. They could definitely also have, um, benefits from this garden. Any questions?
Donetta? Joel, go ahead.
So, would this be one where, you know, I know back behind, um, Elbell Road, the, the county building, Shirts has a community garden. You go in there and you plant and you garden, and I mean, you got corn back there, watermelons. So that's what you're looking to do here, or are you looking just to do other types of plants?
Um, essentially, um, we would have the beds, uh, that are already there. The garden is a wonderful facility, already in place.
Yes.
Everything is ready, we just need to go in there, kinda clean it up, little TLC, and we're ready to plant. Um, the beds that are already in place and viable, not rotting and doesn't need to be replaced. Those would be for, um, vegetables, edible plants and companion plants that would keep pests away naturally, so we wouldn't have to do herbicides, stuff like that. Um, the one thing that I am trying to, um, get approved with the city and I've talked with, um, Mark Fannick at Fannick's Nurseries, uh, it is very possible that we could install an orchard in a portion. It wouldn't be a big orchard, obviously. It's inside the fence. It would be about six trees, but it would have over fifteen different varieties of fruits and that would be right there available. Um, and it would also have, um, permanent beds for edible plants that grow consistently. They don't have to be replanted, like what would go into the beds. Uh, one example would be asparagus. It's, um, it's spread, so it'd be in a container, but it will just come back every year. It won't need to be replanted. We just have to water it and it would be there, just like the trees. Um, and then it would also provide a shaded area in addition to the shaded area that's already there in the grassy portion of the garden. And can I pass this around for the council member to see? Or however, however it needs to be done.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
So this is also not where we're starting. This is the end goal. Um, once you do have your copies, you'll see that there's an orchard and there's walkways and there's a greenhouse. So everything that's in color is something that would be eventually added as a benefit to the community. Um, so the greenhouse would be added, um, it would be something we could actually do, like a volunteer, like, um, just as an example, this is not actually true, just an example. So, Boy Scout troop or Girl Scout troop wants to do something. They build our greenhouse for us in that area. It's some, a project they would do, but it would be for us and we would benefit from it. And it would be a learning portion for them in its own right. But then we would also have a greenhouse where we could have starts for plants and school age students could come in and actually do the planting and they can see how it all works. And the same with our compost piles and the, the beds that would be on the corners, um, of the garden with native plants that would support, um, pollinators and the local wildlife.
No, I just wanna thank you for, um, even considering Cibolo, doing something like this in Cibolo. And I know Mr. Howard has been a big, um, part of getting you here too. Um, but I did want you to just kinda give your vision to council, 'cause I know when I came back, everybody's like, what was it? What was it like? So I wanted to make sure that you had your chance to tell them what you were wanting to try to, to do for the community.
Um, so I do want to, um, just specify that this is like a really, this is a rough, um, thank you, sir. Rough layout of what we could be working towards. Is it going to be exactly this? Maybe not. We might, you know, in six months decide, well, we don't need a greenhouse or whatnot. But, um, I believe that this would get us on the route to where we would be like a hub of activity for the community. And also, I do wanna add that, um, as of right now, any produce that is produced from the garden, that's not, it would be readily available to anyone that can access the garden. Once we have established our hours, when the garden is open, if somebody in the community wants to walk into the garden, they can pull something off the tree or off of a plant, please wash it and then eat it. Um, it's no cost to anybody. They don't have to do anything for it. They don't have to weed before you can take any food or anything like that. It is free. And then also, once it starts producing more, um, in a couple of years, we want to donate it to either a church in the area. They have Raycap, um, programs at churches or maybe, uh, local food bank. There is a possibility of maybe doing markets and then that produce would be sold and it would go back into ba- paying for like the gardening tools or, you know, things to keep the maintenance for the garden. That has not been laid out specifically yet, but that's the goal.
So would you envision, um, having some type of tool shed there? You know, it don't have to be more than six by six, but something small to where you would have the gardening tools in there and have a lock on it. It's where you would have to be a, 'cause I'd hate to just have a tool shed there, have it unlocked all the time and then vandalism happens, so.
Yes. So currently, there's a lock on the double door, the double gate that's, uh, located on the right of the drawing, uh, by the greenhouse. There is a lock there that the city manages, um, and has access to. The gate that's by the, um, the front gate that is the small gate, that is locked. And it, the lock will be replaced with a combination lock and it will have a code that the city will have the code to, and then the master gardeners will also have the code to. The shed that's there is actually in perfect condition, quite operational. No need to, to expand. I don't believe that it's an issue at all. Um, I do think that we can reutilize some of the wood, um, that's already there on the property from the beds, um, that's not rotting, um, to make little cubbies for people to have their tools there readily available. We do have no intention of having the shed where all the chemicals and the tools are to be unlocked and unattended. If the master gardener will be there and the shed's unlocked, if they're not there, it will be locked.
Good.
It won't be available for anybody to go in.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna call for a vote on this, or... Okay, all right, thank you very much.
I do wanna mention, some of our, some of our schools, some of the elementary schools actually have raised gardens built into them that are not being utilized, Cibolo Valley Elementary is one of them. I think Rose Garden is the other and there may be more. But, um, we got a new principal at Cibolo Valley a couple of years ago and she may be open to having you come out and help with like a science unit or something, so just, good for that. Thank you very much.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Howard.
Um, so, I did discuss this with Rachel, um, how we are going to manage the access. We discussed that at, as we move forward, we will advertise that it will be open during certain hours and you will have to be there under the supervision of a master gardener. So we just wanted to at least let everyone know that, because I know, um, I believe in the past it was open twenty-four seven. We have since closed it and limited the access due to a lot of the vandalism and also due to snakes that are there on the property. So I just wanted to at least give that update. Also, Rachel made a request that was actually really good, that there is no signage and due to the location of where the garden is, she requested that we do some kind of signage where, at the corner of Everyday Way and Borgfeld. So that's another thing that we, I wanted to bring to your attention. Yeah, some kind of signage that basically just informs the community that there is a garden in that area be- just because, again, it is, um, kinda secluded in that area. So unless you are at or using the facilities at the church, you really won't know it's back there. Um, and another thing we discussed was having a sign at the garden. She discussed maybe putting the master gardeners as the point of contact. Um, what I'd say, we can probably do, put the point of contact as the master gardeners with the addition of a city staff, um, as well. So that way, if they can't get in contact with a master gardener, they can also get in contact with the city staff. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, at least give you guys some updates, just in case you get any questions about when it's being open and why can't, um, residents have access to it on a twenty-four seven basis.
Thanks so much. All right, let's move on to item B, discussion action on the Strategic Partnership Grant Application for Funding. Brian Higgins, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, Mayor. So, uh, this is the item we brought back tonight. We brought this to council on May twenty-seventh, uh, with, uh, providing you with a fort- We brought this to council on May 27th with providing you with the fourteen applications that were received this year during the strategic partnership grant application period. You had fourteen organizations that requested funding from the city. Overall, they requested about $75,000 plus funding, and council put aside $12,000 this year to award grant recipients funding for these projects. So several of the council members did provide their recommendations for which organizations to fund and how much. Tonight, we're just really trying to get down to the bottom line and see who you want to fund and how much.
Okay. And is there any interest in maybe delaying this? Because I think there's two council members that still need to chime in, or do we want to?
I have my list now, but I would like to see it together.
Okay. Looks like six and two, right? Okay. You got yours in, okay. For some reason, I thought when I saw at the top of this list that six and four weren't in there. Could you scroll that down a little bit? Okay, so seats two and four, I'm sorry. But you do have yours, you just. Okay, so seat two, Randy, okay. All right. Okay, so do we want to move this to the next meeting, or go ahead and do it now on the spot? What do you think, Randy? Okay. All right.
It's up to y'all. We can bring it back to the next meeting if you'd like, if it gives you a little more time to get this in.
I, I know that I'm one of the stragglers, and I apologize. I would like to move it back one, just because I have some questions about how much flexibility we have with the $12,000 budget. We had a lot more applicants than we thought we were going to have. We've had some projects in other areas that did not fully expend the funds. We may have a little bit more funds available. Some of my notes that I have on here were, are we able to give them a partial, partial of what they request and then do more? Like Angel Helpers Ministries, for example, is that every single Cybalo, Cybalo Summer Nights, they're at every single, Cybalo Market Days, they're at every single Cybalo Fest? Can we waive their booth fees as a part of their awards? So I want a little bit more information on that type of thing. So I don't mind discussing it tonight, but just to give everyone the heads up, I do have a lot of questions, and this is 100% on me for not responding timely. So I do apologize. This is my mistake.
What do you think, Randy? Would that give you more time to get yours done? Okay, okay. Anyone want to make a motion to table? Yeah. Okay.
I'll make a motion to table, uh, 12B.
12B, yeah.
Until the next meeting.
Okay, I got a motion.
And can we also make sure that this is early, early in the agenda?
Yeah, sure.
Maybe even before the consent agenda?
Yeah, no problem.
So that they aren't waiting?
Yeah. Yes. Okay, all right. So we have a motion and a second. Please vote on your screens. Okay, go ahead. All right. Motion carries, Donetta?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, seven zero. So we'll, we'll talk about that at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll bring it back in July.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is the, so on, on C, this one has been removed for now. Next meeting in July, okay. Yeah, let's go ahead and go through the informal process. You want to make a motion, Joel?
I'll make a motion to table 12C.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Please vote on your screens. All right, so this one's been tabled, so, okay. All right, moving on to 12D, discussion action to allow the city manager to execute a work order with Kimberly Horn for the master planning services for veterans in Nemets Park in the amount of $83,500. You're going to handle this one for Mr. Gomez?
Yes. Okay, so on April 5th, during a council strategic workshop, a decision was made to prioritize the improvements in our parks. Those parks were Veterans Park and Nemets Park that was identified. So staff met with three different engineering firms to vet them, and Kimberly and Horn was the firm that staff determined would be the best to lead the charge on our master plan and renovations for veterans and Nemets Park. I have one of the representatives from Kimberly and Horn here.
Good evening. My name's Austin Powers with Kimberly Horn. Yes, sir. I was definitely born, I'm born before that movie. Do you want me to answer questions? I can answer any questions, or?
Does staff or council have any?
My question to you.
Yes, sir.
Or Mr. Reed, both y'all. In doing y'all's interviews of the people for, for this, did they hit on every single thing that we were looking for, and they were price track?
Yes. So during each of the firm's presentation, we had them come to Public Works, myself, Mr. Gomez, and Shannon. We sat in on those presentations, and we vetted them. And essentially, what we told or required from them was to go in, give us some designs or some ideas of parks, and to be able to share some of the work that they've done in the past. We vetted to see if they've done any projects similar to these sized parks. In addition to, we also vetted their marketing mix to be able to determine how they would go out and receive the information from residents, engage with stakeholders. Kimberly and Horn did an amazing job in their presentation. They touched on all of our focus points, which was being able to talk to those stakeholders, being able to set forth and go to meetings that we have for our Parks and Rec Commission. They also did a wonderful job. If you came to the kids' fishing tournament, the dock boards, they did that in a week's turnaround. So they've not only did a great job doing the presentation, but they've shown that they are the best firm to handle this.
And in conclusion with that, have we reached out to any of the, whether it's municipalities, or whether it's counties, or anybody that they have done work for to see how their work turned out?
Yes, so we did call in, call in the few cities that they referenced in their presentation. In addition to being able to see some of the work that they've done. And if you would like, I'm sure that they would be able to share their presentation with us if council would like.
Anyone else have any questions?
I just have a quick question. What is the timeframe for you to have your, or your, your design back for?
So this is going to be, the first part is making sure that we at least get it taken care of, just getting the, the, getting this approved tonight. Once this gets approved, if I'm not mistaken, it'll take roughly, correct me if I'm wrong, it'll be about what, roughly about six months?
Yeah, we're looking at about five months to get this, this first process going with public input, all the online surveys, just the data collection. We also have the actual physical land surveys as part of this, and the Parks Interactive Map that was going to be similar to what Shirts has in their, for their parks as well. So all of that, and then once we determine what it is, the scope is, then we'll, we'll scope the design of those two parks as we get through that, this first.
You're doing a master plan, so is that master plan kind of including how to connect those parts? I mean, I'm just asking, because I'm one of those, you know, we, we've had a lot of, I just came from TML Board of Directors meeting the last week, and there was this discussion of consultant, consultant, consultants. I sat with a table, a bunch of staffers from different cities around the state of Texas. And they're like, you know, yeah, the consultants are really putting a pounding on everybody to consult. So I was just wanting to make sure that in this master plan with what we're funding, yeah, you're looking at both of those parks, but you're looking at how we can also connect?
This, this specific scope of work really focuses on the amenities of the park, but we do take into consideration everything else that's being offered within the system. So not necessarily connections, you know, trail connections or anything as an overall system, but we are looking at other parks to make sure that we're not duplicating or doing something that's going to cannibalize your other parks.
Yeah, I was a park foreman at Shirts for many years, so, yeah, we didn't want to have the same stuff at every park, because then.
And Mayor and council, so we're hiring them to focus on the two parks that you prioritized in your five-year CIP. You have asked the EDC board, and the EDC board has been supportive to recommend in their FY '26 budget, a funding for a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And Mr. Hicks, your appropriate concern or, or desire to have this bigger picture will definitely be addressed in that master plan. And I appreciate hearing that our consultant is looking at our other parks when they're considering these two specific parks. So kind of a quasi-awareness of overall.
That's why I was asking kind of both of y'all, because, thank you, I appreciate you answering my question.
I do have one more question.
Ready to vote?
Because at our partners, our strategic partnership that you referenced on April 5th, we, council specifically said we want Veterans Park to be looked at and addressed. So is this five months, what, is this to get a full scope of Nemets Park? And then Veterans Park, or is this literally half of, I know, half of Nemets and all of veterans, and then you're going to come back and ask again for the remaining part of Nemets? I just want to understand what exactly you're looking, you're going to be asking for at this point.
So if I'm understanding your question correctly, they are going to be doing meetings or pop-ups, charrettes at both parks. So during this process, they're going to be gathering data on both parks, meeting with the stakeholders that utilize both parks to be able to come back with a design, be able to take that information and come up with ideas before actually creating a design. So what they're going to do is they're going to take the information that we gathered from that dot exercise. The Parks Commission is going to be going to Nemets Park twice during July to be meeting with stakeholders to be able to get the resident's information, to get the resident's idea and vision of what they want for the parks. And then after that, it's going to go to the Parks Commission to just say, hey, here's the idea or the amenities that have been addressed or that have been identified. What are your thoughts? They're going to meet with council as well, and then we are, they're going to share their, they're going to go and create their design.
I guess what I'm asking is, being that Veterans Park was so important to all of council, that Veterans Park be, I mean, I love that we're looking at it, at both of them, but I know it's both of them, but Veterans was the one that we really needed to focus on as well. That that one kind of gets, you know, the attention it truly deserves, being that Nemets is going to be so much more work. But we need to, we need to make sure Veterans is truly taken care of.
Ms. Reed, go ahead.
Let me just chime in. So I'll add to what David Howard expressed there. So our consultant will be working with staff and collecting public input. Based upon that public input, as Mr. Howard said, we'll go back to the Parks and Recreation Commission to, to bounce those ideas off of them. They're going to then, what their recommendation is, Mr. Howard and the consultant will come to council. So at this point, when council sees the consultant and Mr. Howard again on these two parks, it'll be concept only. Based upon your direction, then this consultant will be drawing up construction bid plans so that we can bid these projects out. And Ms. Roberts, I think your comment at the very beginning or question was, we may not, you didn't say it this way. If our money can't cover it all, are we only doing half of this or half of that? When they come back with their OPCC Opinion of Probable Construction Cost, you're going to prioritize for us how we go about these two parks.
Councilman Mahoney?
Just, just a quick question about, you said, I think, that Parks Commission people will be going twice in July?
Yes.
To, on site in Nemets Park?
Yes, sir.
On Saturday?
No, it'll be throughout the week. So what we did was we.
Well, excuse me, what, my point is, if they, if they miss a Saturday out there, they may be missing a lot of.
What we did was, we determined, we looked at our schedule based off of the rentals, and what we saw was, we identified, hey, these are the days that they're going to be rented out from the various organizations, the mix of organizations that use our facility. And that's how we determined the days. We do have a meeting on July 2nd for our Parks Commission. I think you brought up a very good point that on Saturdays, because of the high usage on the, on that day as well, that it may be a day that we need to possibly consider. So that way, we've identified a day during the week and a day on the weekend, so that way, we're capturing as much information as possible.
Donetta, your question? Okay.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve 12D as written.
Second.
Okay, got a motion on the table by Councilman Hicks and a second by Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens. This is to approve the motion. Okay. Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you, Austin Powers. Yes. No, we skipped it. All right, next up is item number E, discussion action on the no smoking ordinance by Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens.
I just wanted to bring this back, because I think it was March 11th that we held our, a, a meeting, and I brought this onto the agenda about updating our no smoking ordinance to include electronic smoking devices. I feel it's time to update that. I understood that the subcommittee for the ordinance, subcommittee was to look at this. After Chief brought his ordinance back last week, I just asked if we could bring back the no smoking ordinance to be updated just as well. I know the city of San Antonio updated it also in 2025, so I just felt it was necessary for us to get on board with this. I have noticed vaping devices in parks, and technically, because this is not within our ordinance, they're not with, they're not out of bounds of the law not to have that there, because the law itself says it has to have, it has to be a lighted substance, and vaping is electronic. It's, it's a vapor, so I think it's necessary to update the language within our ordinance. And I'd like to, to make a motion tonight about updating that for city staff to come back with that ordinance.
Discussion about that.
Did you have a comment, Councilman Mahoney?
Yes, the, so I'm part of the ordinance subcommittee, and we had quite a bit of text in front of us that's not on the screen right now. Does, does anybody else have that to look at? There was one part that we objected to or didn't, or weren't comfortable with, and that's where it puts a penalty of $2,000 per violation. $2,000, which, you know, seems like it's not the death penalty, but that just seems horrible. And we discussed it and said, well, we could support this if that was changed to $500, because anything more than $500 to us just felt extremely severe. But Mr. Mahoney, it says not to exceed, meaning that the judge, because I, I know that I've been to a couple of the courts, Mr. Mahoney, and the judge will say, you know, the, the fine can go up to this, but it won't exceed that. And I mean, they found a lady running a stop sign and charged her a dollar. There was more, more fun spent on them having that, that jury there, because we had to pay 13 or 14 jurors. The judge got paid. The police officers, the police officer that wrote the ticket had to be in the court, because he couldn't be the bailiff that day. So we had to have another police officer. So I understand what you're saying, but that, that's something that, it just says not to exceed. It doesn't say the fine will be $2,000. Does that make sense? I mean, I'm reading it here. It says punishment by. I mean, I, I'm reading it here, says punishment by a fine, not to exceed two thousand.
Do you want to cap it at five hundred? Is that what you're saying?
That's.
Yeah, MTE is five hundred.
That was the feeling of the subcommittee.
Okay.
I would, can I make a comment real fast?
Please do.
Um, in regards to what you're referring to there. I'm gonna admit it, I just got a ticket in Universal City and had to go to court myself. It was a city ordinance that I violated, I admitted that I violated. The judge literally looked at me and said, this is what the ordinance's cost is? No, nothing, no qualms about it, this is what you have to pay. So if we have in this thing that someone can pay up to two thousand dollars, it is the judge's discretion, yes, that they can chart, they can go up to two thousand dollars.
Exactly.
Exactly, that's a little excessive, I believe.
I don't think our judge, our, our judge.
Well, again, I know, I understand what you're saying, but it's, what if that judge has a bad day? So, I mean, well, so do I. I had one that day in Universal City, but I paid my fine and we go on with life.
Okay, just to confirm, the two thousand, up to two thousand dollars is in our current ordinance. That part was not being amended. So the part that was being added was the vaping to the thing. So I agree, two thousand seems high, but can the ordinance, what I understood this motion to be is that, that we have the ordinance subcommittee bring back this ordinance to us where we can discuss and vote to, to make that amendment to, there's two amendments proposed is what I sa, I hear. We want to decrease the fine from up to two thousand to up to five hundred. Makes sense, and add vaping. Those are the two separate amendments that I'm hearing, and the motion is just to bring it back to council, right?
Right, that's all it is.
The motion was to actually have city staff bring the ordinance.
Right, to bring it, to bring an updated ordinance, so.
Yes.
I, I'm okay with bringing it back to discuss and to change.
Did you want to make a motion to add, to, to add the five hundred bucks?
No, I don't think we need to because that will be a discussion when we actually make the motion. I think the ordinance subcommittee, if that is something that they discussed as subcommittee members, they can reach out to whoever the lead is on, the staff lead is on that subcommittee and ask for that change to be made when it's brought to council. I think that that's realistic. But when I was on the ordinance subcommittee, that's what we did. We asked the staff, when they brought the ordinance, to bring it how the subcommittee would want it to be approved or had discussed it being approved, so.
Okay, so do we have a motion on the table?
Yeah, there's a motion.
Okay.
So, so just to be clear, we're not voting to adopt?
No.
No, it's just to bring it back. We, they haven't even written us an ordinance yet, adding the vapor. This is the old ordinance. This is the existing ordinance, and they're, that, she's asking for them to come back. Y'all can lower it, Mr. Reed, y'all can just add the vaping to it. That, that's all it is, we're not adopting this ordinance tonight. We were asking to have coun, or, just like he brought back the, the alcohol ordinance last, last month.
Yeah, okay, let's vote. Councilwoman Roberts. All right, motion carries forward three.
Mayor and Council, I just want clarity, so we will bring back a drafted amended ordinance. You'll have a discussion based upon the direction that night, then we would, if, let's say it's in favor, to schedule the public hearing. Where, there's not an expectation that the public hearing's the same night that you're considering the draft ordinance? I just want clarity.
When we already have it here, we already have the ordinance.
So I'm just asking for clarity, are you expecting the public hearing to be the same night?
Do we have to have a public?
Why do we need a public hearing? Remember, we already have a ordinance to draw out.
No, no public hearing on this ordinance?
We're just amending.
Okay, never mind.
We didn't have a public hearing for him.
I'm, I'm out of order.
Why do we have to have a public hearing for this?
I'm out of order. Ms. Simics is shaking her head, no public hearing. Sorry about that.
All right, let's move on. F, Discussion Action on Council Policies, Councilwoman Roberts.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I would first like to ask a question, I guess. Kind of pertains to our removal and appointments of committees. Um, and it was put that y'all wanted to have a policy. There is a policy currently in place, and it's been in place since two thousand and twenty or twenty-one, I believe. But it also refers back to the charter that says that if you miss three meetings, you forfeit your position. So I get that we need to have our policies in place, but we also need to respect our charter. Correct? So, I mean, because there's been a big discussion about our charter is what we live and die by. Well, we're not living and dying by our charter. We tried to set a consistency as you have asked us to do, and we got shot down saying it was a personal attack, when it wasn't a personal attack. It, because there was five other people that were trying to be, that were gonna be removed off of some of these other committees. And they need to be removed because they have clearly missed their timeframe. And so we are meeting for the policy committee, a subcommittee, in July, and there's a few that we're going to be looking at. But, um, at this time, I would like to make a motion to.
Hold on, if you don't mind, Don, I want to give everybody a chance to speak because I know that there's a couple of folks.
Okay, well.
Yeah, but I, I will let you make the motion when it's time.
Oh, but it's about something else.
Oh, go ahead.
It's not necessarily about the policy.
Okay.
About, well, okay, and let me say, now I don't want to make a motion. I would like it for us to, to discuss pretty, through all this.
Yep.
About who our members are on the appointment and, and removal subcommittee.
Okay.
Which, um, I believe is Mr. McLaughlin and Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens.
Right.
And Mr., okay, and Mr. Mahoney. Because it's my understanding that there's been no necessarily meeting in regards to this. So there needs to be a meeting. If we're gonna set these policies, we need to get this done. I am, we started talking about this, I don't know when. Councilwoman Cunningham has, you know, made the comments that we need to get policies in, in order, but I know she's been talking about that for the last three years. So we need to get this done, we need to stop pussyfooting around and get this taken care of. So if it means we need to remove people from a particular committee to get stuff done, then that's what we need to do, so that way, we can get stuff done.
Okay, understood. Joel, I'll give you a chance to speak, and then Norma.
I didn't know what this was concerning. I mean, I, I know that she reached out to me. I've been willing to, I mean, I've got the policies right here, had them printed. I know that we're supposed to meet the first of July or the tenth of July or something like that. The three of us.
Okay.
No, that's not a.
Because this one was provided to me in two thousand twenty-four, but I was told it's not a valid policy.
It's not a valid policy.
Okay, Norma, you have anything?
Yes, I, I think when it comes to the absences, no, I agree with you, Don. Um, absolutely, following our charter is very important. I feel that's why the public hearing was so important just as well. We're not gonna go down that path. I think it's very well to remind that within some of those absences and some of the commissioners, particularly of the Charter Review Commission, is that there was interference in the April meetings. We have to acknowledge that. That is, that doesn't go without consequence. That's why I had made a, a, another motion to exempt any other commissioners who were absent from that particular meeting because they were supposed to hold it. Everyone was in agreement in March to hold it on April the first. And we all know that Mayor Allen went ahead and, and canceled their April first meeting, not even discussing that with the chairperson, just canceled it because he would, wanted to appoint more commissioners to. So with that kind of interference from this body to that commission, they should not be penalized in their absence. You know, so they already had that set, they already knew in advance. So then when our, we had our meeting and those appointments were had, then within that same week, they were fumbling and scrambling to, to see who could make it. And I know we had a couple of commissioners, one sitting right here, who wasn't able to make that particular meeting just as well. So that, that exemption would have gone for her just as well, so that, so that she wouldn't have that, that as a penalty just as well. So that, it, it was just, whenever we have an interference like that, it shouldn't be counted against that particular commissioner. So, no, but I agree with you, we should, we, we should be following that. And I was, in, in line to the other commissioners, as we had already arranged our policy, I was thinking, that is another policy? Why not do that together with our policies board since that, it, it pertains to that? Why have two different ones? Because then I'm gonna be having conversations over here, and that could be a quorum of some sort, you know, regarding, that way, it's all consistent. If one policy affects another, and I think it would probably be a good idea for just the policy subcommittee to probably look at all of them.
Katie, go ahead.
For us to do the policies and then y'all are just doing the appointing?
No, I'm saying, it, it, there's.
Let's, let's keep this going.
I'm just saying.
Katie, go ahead.
There's, there may not be a need for both.
I think that that's something that in your initial meetings, y'all should come up with a plan of what is going to be accomplished. You have to make realistic goals and realistic, achievable, measurable things moving forward. You can say, I want to solve world hunger on the policy board. You're not gonna be able to accomplish that in the timeframe that we have for the boards. Usually, subcommittees, you meet once a month, if that. So being realistic about what's going to be accomplished. I would love for all the policies to get done on your subcommittees in the next six months, and then we have a great full set of policies we can vote in that are council policies. We have a great full set of policies for committees and appointments and all of that. I don't think that that's realistic necessarily, but I think that's something that each subcommittee needs to determine, what is realistic, and work on that with your staff member who's assigned to the subcommittee. I said this at the last meeting, and I think that it's still very important that we keep in mind excused versus unexcused absences. We have a whole process for officially voting to excuse an absence of someone if they've reported that they're going to be absent for whatever reason. People have lives, they're volunteering for these committees. We get paid a whopping ninety-two dollars after taxes for being on council, it's not a lot, but these volunteers on the committees get paid nothing to do what they're doing. And they're going above and beyond a lot of times to do work outside of the committee meetings. Showing up when you have work, you have a business that you own, you have children, you have ailing parents, you have vacations, you have school, you have soccer games, you have, you have life. Things happen, you could get hurt, you could get in a car wreck. There's a million different reasons why people miss meetings. And I think as long as, as it's an excused absence and, and it's been excused by the board, that should not count against people. We do, I did see the absence list. There are a few people who are just absent, they don't really give a reason. Maybe you're absent six times in a row, and they're all excused. Maybe that's time for someone to approach and say, hey, are you still able to be on this committee? I don't think that missing three times because you've had a massive emergency and you've, you've happened to miss three times should be grounds for just flat out removing you. I do think that, yes, we do have it in the charter, and we do have rules saying after three times you forfeit, but it's not clear, it just says absence. And I think that even with council, that's a very slippery slope because we have people here that doesn't say during your single term or in one year. There's no timeframe for it, it just says if you miss three times, you're out. So if we're applying that to our committees, and we have people who've been on committees for, they can be on a committee, I believe, up to six years. You miss three times in six years, and all of a sudden, year five, you're kicked out because you missed once in your first year, and once in your third year, and once. I think it's very, it's a very slippery slope. When we have people who are committed and volunteering and very active, we have to be able to give some flexibility. And I think that our current policy is too ambiguous and too broad that it, it can lead us to be, to narrowly define it when it doesn't necessarily need to be narrowly defined. I think we can clarify maybe in our policy, not, maybe not write a new one from scratch, but clarify like excused versus unexcused absence. If we're not gonna, if excused absence doesn't matter, then why are we even doing it as a part of the meeting? We should just say, okay, we're gonna take roll, these people are out. Doesn't matter why they're out because it's, it's, it counts against them either way. So I do agree that there are some issues with people missing a lot of meetings. There are, there are some people who probably should be removed because they've missed every single meeting they've ever, were supposed to be at.
They probably weren't given any input either.
Yes, and they didn't, they didn't provide notice. But I don't think we should hold it against someone if they've had a situation, they've provided ample notice to the city. If a meeting was rescheduled from one that they were able to attend, and now it's rescheduled to a date that they weren't able to attend. COVID threw a lot of meetings off balance and rescheduling. I think we just need to be proactive with that. If we make it too stringent and we're penalizing people for having life happen, we're going to really narrow down the pool of candidates who is willing to volunteer for free for city committees.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I was on the Parks Commission when this happened with my leg, and I did miss three, and I, I was at the point where I was gonna be removed when I got elected, and I'm glad I'm at this point that, you know, I am, that I'm able to walk again. But, I mean, life happens. So we have to get consistency. Otherwise, we're just gonna be running around crazy again, so there has to be consistency.
Oh, one hundred percent.
Okay, Councilman Mahoney, let's keep this moving. Yes, sir.
Well, I just want to say, I'm on this subcommittee about the selection for commissions and boards, and, uh, ready to have a meeting, any, anytime.
Do y'all want to establish a date and time to have that meeting? So that way, it would concern, it'll alleviate your concerns? Is there a?
With those three.
Okay. Do you?
We've got to work for this.
Yep.
Okay, so do you, do y'all want to set up a date and time or propose a date and time?
I would prefer it to be face-to-face versus email, just so that nothing gets lost in translation via.
We'll get, we'll.
Can y'all get it done this week?
We'll get it done tonight, we'll pick, we'll pick a date, I will.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right.
But I, but I also want to say, it's a little discouraging and, and, uh, that we can have a subcommittee to do some work on something, take time to study it, come in early for a meeting, but then the entire council just kind of, never mind what we decided in the subcommittee. When we first talked about having a subcommittee interviewing the people for these commissions and such two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, that was a case where some council members said, oh, I think we should all be there, all have some input. And so again, that was a second case, another subcommittee I'm part of, that it was just kind of, it was sort of like, never mind, the whole council as a whole will handle this instead of just a subcommittee to make those recommendations or decisions. So I think that's a trend that we need to get away from. If we're gonna have a subcommittee, let's trust them to do some of the homework, get some of the questions answered, so that we don't spend so much time on council just rehashing the same thing.
Makes sense. Randy? Jeff?
I don't know, it seems like we just kind of make it up as we go. We decide when we want to apply policy and when we don't. Heard at the last meeting, we don't appoint people that don't show up for the interview. It's inherently false because we absolutely did appoint somebody to the Charter Review that was not here when we appointed them. I'll give Ms. Roberts credit, she sent this to me. Uh, let me read here. So we, we do have some stipulations for unexcused. Unexcused, three consecutive regular meetings is just a forfeiture. It doesn't even have to come to council, you just forfeit your seat. And then, uh, members of organizations that meet monthly and miss more than three regular meetings in any twelve-month period, excused or unexcused, forfeit their positions. But they can seek reinstatement within ten business days by filing with the city, excuse me. Secretary has sworn and notarized request for reappointment, providing the information the former member believes is appropriate for the city's council to consider when acting on the member's request. The request will be placed on the agenda for the following city council meeting based on the city's agenda preparation process for consideration and action. The action taken is final. So we can do what we want with policies, but if we're just gonna apply them when we feel like it, what's the point?
Same thing goes with the charter, right?
Okay, so the three of y'all will designate a day and time? Y'all are gonna make that, make that a, um, plan tonight? Any other need to vote on anything? Donetta?
I'm sorry?
You good?
I'm good.
Okay, all right, let's move on to G, Discussion Presentation on the Tyler Technologies Record Management System, the RMS, status chief? Welcome, Chief Andreas.
All right, good morning, I mean, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tell it's been a long day, but, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Chief Thaddeus Ganders for the record, and I just want to give y'all an update on the Tyler Record Management System. So basically, uh, as councils are aware, uh, we kind of started this process when council approved, uh, funding for this project back in August, uh, twenty-seventh, uh, twenty twenty-five. And, uh, we have since then, um, having that funding approved, has started the progress to begin to work with Tyler's Record Management System. And I'm also gonna say, we've been working with Church Police Department to understand when they flip their go-live switch, uh, some of the challenges or even successes they have with the system. So we've, uh, thus far to today, we've conducted most of our planning, uh, we reviewed and validated all of our data, uh, you know, kudos to our IT team and GIS team that's really worked very closely with us to make sure Tyler is getting the information they need, uh, so that we're ready for go-live. We've also taken, which is our current Record Management System, that's BAD. Uh, we've also taken, which is our current Record Management System, uh, that's BAD, right, that we currently have here. That's that outdated system we have. But we've used that Record Management System to review, design, and configure how that system is going to be in the virtual cloud. Uh, we're not gonna put bad data into Tyler. We're gonna have that data where it's in a virtual cloud, where our officers will still have access if they're searching for information that was stored in the BAD system. So, uh, that's working really well for us. We're also gonna be flipping the switch to go to Tyler's Property Evidence Module. So, we'll be flipping that going over, and we started the process there to ensure that, uh, we're ready to go, and our barcodes will all be in alignment as we change that property and evidence module over to Tyler. Uh, we've had weekly touchpoint meetings with Tyler's Leadership Project Team and our team. Uh, I'd like to say that that's been going really well. We've continued to utilize Shertz, too, uh, as subject matter experts, because they flipped the system on this several months ago. Uh, one of the things I think is important for council, uh, on July third, fourth, and fifth, all of our sworn and professional staff employees, Tyler was here, uh, at the Cibolo Police Department, and we've all went through our mobile and our current records, uh, report writing application. That was six hours of training. I'm sorry? I'm sorry, June. Yeah. June third, fourth, and fifth. Thank you, Councilman. Yeah. Uh, that we went through our professional training on mobile and our report writing module. Six hours of training was conducted, uh, there. Um, I think that went really well for us. Uh, back on June tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, just recently, we had Tyler back out, uh, where we did professional, uh, staff and sworn staff members who, uh, got trained on our Records Management System. And all that was is how they're gonna search for people, how they're gonna search for property, right? How we're gonna enter things in Tyler. We also use that time for all of our specialized areas. They all got four hours of training on how it's gonna work with Record Management, how it's gonna work with property and evidence, how it's gonna work with investigators. So, in-depth training on that. Um, I'm proud to say that one of the things that we spearheaded here is Tyler does have a new record, uh, uh, I mean, a new report writing module. Uh, Cibolo will be the one that'll be testing that module. For us, uh, we've spoke to other agencies, who's found that module to be very successful, uh, since Shertz is joining us in that. Uh, so, I mean, that's just kind of where we're at. We, we've done a lot of training. A lot of things are on par with us. Uh, the major thing for me is what I've talked to council about, us having the ability to be able to use, uh, that's report writing system, whether it's on a smartphone, a tablet, right? Whether we're using it on our MDCs that's in the car, or laptops. Uh, we have already tested most of those modules. Officers are being able to go in and see how to produce a report, whether they're in the field, whether it be on a cell phone or an MDC. So, that's been working really well for us. Uh, Shertz has also, uh, helped train us up on that a little bit, because they're already using that platform. And then finally, for us, the big date will be July twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth. That's go-live for us. That'll be when we flip the switch and move over from our BAD system into Tyler. Uh, we will have, uh, representatives from Tyler here on campus. We'll also be partnering with Shertz on that process to ensure it's a smooth, uh, transition. So, uh, you know, there's not really much to add, but to say the investment that you made, we're absolutely training on it. Uh, again, I think the IT team, uh, it looks like we will be ready on July twenty-second, uh, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth to move over to a new system.
Well, I'm glad that this is pushing forward.
That's true. And I appreciate you doing it. Uh, I think the one thing that we're seeing from that, obviously with, uh, the other agencies, uh, is the capabilities of the system and, and how it'll work with us. The feedback from all of our employees have been, this is like night and day. So, uh, and it is. We, like I said, we're on an aging system. Yeah. Really moving from the Flintstones, right, uh, into a new age. So, uh, it's been great feedback. Uh, I anticipate, uh, us to be able to improve efficiency in the police department, increase our capabilities, uh, and also to be able to use a lot of analytical reports as we get into putting information in that system. Any questions you have for me for where we're at, uh, currently in the go-live process, uh, with Tyler?
Sounds like the twenty-third, right? So, good to hear. Thank you, chief.
We'll report back. Thank you.
Appreciate the update. All right. The city council will meet in executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, Section 551.087, economic development, and Section 551.074, personnel matters to discuss the following. A, negotiations between GV-SUD and the City of Cibolo concerning water rights. B, negotiations between GV-SUD and the city regarding an inter-local government agreement for utility disconnects. C, negotiations between the Cibolo Sports Association LLC and the City of Cibolo concerning proposed investment in the Cibolo Youth Sports Complex. D, negotiations between Guadalupe County and the City of Cibolo regarding annexation road rights of way. And update on Project Theo. And F, city manager, city secretary, appointment, discussion, evaluation, duties, discipline, or dismissal. The time is now nine oh six PM. We will break into executive session.
All right, we're gonna resume from executive session. The time is twelve, I'm sorry, eleven twelve. Eleven twelve. All right, so Katie, you have a motion about some leave for Mr. Reed?
So in regard to, where did I put my thing? Item thirteen F, I make a motion to increase Mr. Reed's annual leave bank by two weeks annually, and add an additional one-time recognition leave of one week. Two that would be added to the vacation or whatever the bank is called, that would be renewed annually. And then... No, two weeks. So increase your... So increase... Increase that, that leave, the vacation leave, from three weeks to five weeks annually. And then additionally, have a one-time recognition leave of one week. One time.
Okay, so we got a motion...
Correct, so the annual leave would be the current three weeks, or the vacation leave would be the current three weeks, plus an additional two weeks, that would be every year, so going from three to five. And then a one-time, one-week recognition leave.
Just this year? This year.
That's what I want to make sure.
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, please vote. Yep, all right, it's eleven twelve, all right, so we have enough votes, there's five.
No, yours, yours went through. No, it did not.
Yeah, just, she's absent, okay. Joel, did you vote? Okay, all right, well anyway, there's enough votes. All right, let's move on to item number H. Okay, item H, discussion from council members that have attended events, seminars, meetings, or, or, we'll start with Jeff this time.
So I got to hang out with Siblo's finest, both are men, women, in red and blue, so Mr. Huggins, Mr. Reed, since they're not here, if you extend my thanks to both chiefs for amazing experience, both Thursday and Friday last week. Thank you.
Randy? Tony? Okay. Katie?
I met with a developer who was interested in learning more about the city and some of the challenges that they may face in bringing a development to the area. They were very encouraged by their meeting with staff, they had already discussed with staff, and so that was yet another encounter where they've said positive things. And I spoke with several residents as well, over the last two weeks. I attended the No Kings protest, and I want to give a huge, huge thank you to our police department. Their coordination with the county and with the other cities was flawless, they did a fantastic job. It was very evident that they were present, and that they were there, there was, and I also want to give a huge shout-out to everyone who was there, there were more than four hundred people on that corner, and it could have, you never know how those things are gonna go. It went really well, everyone was peaceful, they cleaned up afterwards, but the, it was, it was really great to see how well our police worked with the community, they were concerned about people getting enough water. Chief helped load up some stuff at the end, to help clean it up a little bit faster, it was very good. I was very impressed with, with how that was planned and how it was, it was done. It was very, very well organized. And then, the Lions Club, I'm in the Lions Club, they are doing a recruitment push right now. They want to get a few new, a few new members by July, so no pressure, Mr. Reed, but the city manager in shirts is a member. So you may consider that. I see some other people who may want to be on the Lions Club in the audience, so I'll come after you too. It's a really great club, they do a lot for the community scholarships and things like that. But that is something that I've been trying to be more present at, I've been on the Lions Club for like, four or five years, and I'm one of the worst members because work has not allowed me to attend the meetings, but they do a lot of really good work in the community.
I attended the Flag Day ceremony, so that was actually a great event, turned out super good. Appreciated Herman Sons that came out, facilitated everything very well, it ran very smoothly. Thank you to Peggy and Valerie just as well, for everything that you coordinated, as well as the cake also. Thank you for ordering the cake. And then, I don't know where it came from, but it was good, very well designed. Thank you for accommodating the Army's birthday in that, it was great to have, you know, the Lieutenant Colonel that came to speak just as well. I thought the speech was, yeah, Colonel Perez, Lieutenant Colonel Perez, and her speech was just incredible, so Flag Day was great. I would like to see more resident participation, I'm not sure if it's just the time of day. It's a, it was a Friday, it's nine AM, and I don't know, maybe in the future we would consider doing that a little bit later, so that more of the community could come out. I did notice in coming to Flag Day, there were people out walking their dogs, or outside exercising, and maybe if it was a little bit later, you might have more participation, and would like to see more of council also come in and support that day. I think there's only two of us there, so, yeah, that's about it.
Donetta, anything?
I've just been to the CRWA meetings, budget meetings, construction meetings, attended the chamber lunch and NEP lunch, and then just going to a couple of the boards and commissions that we have going on right now.
To add on to Ms. Sanchez, but to, to let you know, it's Harmon Sons is the ones that take, and they're the ones that organize it, just let Peggy know about it, so. That's why it's when it is, and it's not, yeah, because they're the ones that organize it, or have for years. But no, I did that, Commissioner's Court, things are changing and going on there, that's about it.
Thank you, Joel, all right, let's move on to I, discussion on items the council would like to see on future agendas. I'll start with you, Joel.
I have nothing at this time, sir.
Okay, Donetta Roberts?
I have nothing at this time.
Dorma, anything?
Nothing.
Katie?
I think this is already on the agenda for next time, we'd kind of discussed it, but the, we had approved the putting another building for your family, if you have a property for five acres or more, you don't have to go through council or through variance or whatever, and then possibly changing that to three acres. I do know that when our attorney responded to that email chain, there was someone, maybe it was the planning director, there was some discussion about if it needed to go to planning and zoning, so can we look into that and see if it needs to go to P and Z before coming to council, because I want to expedite that if possible.
Thank you.
Yes, and it is scheduled for July eighth.
Perfect.
UDC amendment does go to P and Z to officially then make a recommendation to you to amend the UDC. So we'll, Rick will ensure that we have that on the next P and Z agenda.
Perfect.
Yes.
Okay, and that will be prior to the eighth?
July eighth is a discussion, right?
Oh, July eighth would be the discussion, and we wouldn't be able to do anything until the next meeting after that?
It's by ordinance, and so it's kind of like with Ms. Sanchez Stevens tonight. It's by ordinance, and so it's kind of like what Ms. Sanchez Stevens tonight had.
Okay.
But we would schedule it for the July twenty-second, if I have that...
Then I'll come talk with you too, after the meeting, to see what some of the other options may be for them.
Okay.
Item J, discussion action on the review and confirmation of all upcoming special meetings and workshops, and scheduling the time, date, and place of additional special meetings or workshops. Peggy Simics, do we have any special meetings or workshops?
No, but what I'd like to ask the council is, on the twelfth of July, we have the attorney interviews. So we already agreed that they would start at nine o'clock, the first one would start at nine. So I was using the same, because I need to call each of the four people back, give them their exact time. And so I was using the same schedule as we did when we had our last interviews. And what we did was, we had one started at nine o'clock, ended at ten thirty, gave you a time after the interview to talk about that interview, before you went on to the next one, which started at ten thirty, went to noon. You take a break at noon time, eat lunch for thirty minutes, you continue on it, twelve thirty to two, and then from two to three thirty, you're done. And I think then it was about another thirty minutes where we actually did the actual scoring. And that took about thirty minutes, so you would get out of there around four o'clock in the afternoon, it's an all-day. There's four people. There's four. And so, I didn't know if you wanted to use that same type of breakdown, unless you wanted to change it, where you didn't want to spend as long with each person, I mean, it's up to you, because I do need to, to call and, it's really, we're getting close to those date, that date. I mean, I've already had them hold the date of July twelfth, they just don't know the exact time, because I needed to make sure that you're fine with the schedule.
Everybody okay with the twelfth?
We will have something for you for breakfast. And we'll have lunch.
Okay, are we gonna do it here, Peggy?
We will have it here, yes.
In this room, okay.
Yes.
All right, sounds good. Item number fifteen, can I get a motion? All in favor? We are adjourned, thank you.